All right. Let me call it all Mr. Dowell.
Never ends.
Here.
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 Miss Moore.
Here.
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 Thank you. Would you all join me and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next we come to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Webb. All in favor, say aye.
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 I would actually like to make a motion to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion so that the agenda would reflect a period of discussion of whether to recommend to the City Council that we establish a steering committee for the MEH GM expansion project.
Okay. For the second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess I'm kind of surprised. Why would we not have a group like we did last time? I mean, it sounds like I'm missing something, as if somebody said, "Let's proceed without a steering committee of some kind." Did I miss that? Because I missed the first meeting in the summer because I was gone.
So, without getting into a substantive discussion, Mr. Lawrence, at the last joint meeting with the City Council, there was actually an extensive discussion about whether or not there should be some sort of steering group composed of representatives from the City Council, the school board, and community organizations, or not. And there was, I think, a fair amount of controversy on that topic. At the end of the day, there was some discussion, or there was general agreement, that I think a consultant should be employed to help the groups. But there was by no means anywhere near consensus, and there were some opinions expressed that there should not be a steering group. I thought it would be helpful to have a discussion of that point among the school board in particular before going into our next session with the City Council.
Okay, no action, just a discussion.
Yes.
Well, I would note that item 7.03 does have on tonight's agenda something about the Mount Daniel update and the GM MEH project.
So can I just add on to that?
And I think that would be a possibility for us to have that discussion at that time. Would that be acceptable?
That would be fine with me. Okay. I will withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Ankuma, we are voting on a motion to adopt our agenda. Welcome. So, without it... No, we had an amendment that is subsequently withdrawn, so I believe right now we could call the question. All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Did someone second that?
Ms. Gill seconded it.
I seconded the first motion.
Yeah.
And Ms. Gill seconded the second.
Okay, thank you.
So all in favor of adopting the original motion to adopt the agenda as proposed, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we have an agenda. Now we come to item 2.01, public comment. Any public comments? Slips. Seeing none, we will go now to item three, the Apple iBook presentation, Dr. Jones.
We invited Jeannie to come tonight after the discussion at our last meeting because the school board had indicated that you wanted to see what was in the iBook, which is, it's really a performance-based rubric presentation, like a portfolio. And so Jeannie's just going to show you a little bit about what's in it and what sort of evidence is inside the actual book. So, again, this is at your request, and so go ahead, Jeannie, and take it away.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for having me tonight. I just want to point out that there were certain criteria that we had to follow for making the book, and there were certain areas that we had to discuss. And the areas are here on this first slide right now. So we wanted to discuss visionary leadership, innovative learning and teaching, ongoing professional learning, compelling evidence of success, flexible learning environment were the key areas that we targeted when we made the book. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through this, and I'm going to give you a preview of the book. I'm not going to go through everything. It's an interactive book. It is in the iTunes Store. That, when you go online, you can download it for free, so that's where it's housed right now. So if you know anything about iTunes, you could actually access it. So the first thing is, I'm going to do an introductory video, and some of you may have seen this in the past, and some of you that are new, it might be new to you.
What does your computer ask you to do?
Over the past few years, technology has changed a lot.
Technology is transforming students' access to learning.
I remember the first week when I came to George Mason, they were actually installing the wireless access point.
Having wireless in the school, I think, has been a huge game changer.
And I was like, wow, this is exciting because we have two in the library.
So the thing is, I can't live without this, and I can't expect my students to iBook.
First, we had a sunup for computer labs, and if we were lucky, we could get in. Then we had laptop carts, which made our access to the Internet a whole lot better. I have these laptops for my French I class, but now that it's made the material more authentic for them, that I use it in my French II class, and I use it in all of those classes every day, the whole class.
Not only are we getting out laptops and using them every day, it's really changed how we think about a group. Multiple kids can edit one document at a time.
To have two students in the same group with laptops out is huge. They're kind of using one as the final product machine and one as the, like, research machine or the data processing and all that kind of stuff.
They can be at home working on it. I can peek in on what they're doing and write and leave comments to them.
And I think it's my job as a teacher to prepare these students to be sound, independent learners.
It's amazing how easy it is to change a textbook class to one that is based on the Internet with real authentic materials.
It's making me more creative about the types of things I assign to kids.
Can't always show them the rules. I feel it's better to show them the tools to use to succeed, and this is, that's what this is.
So that was an introductory video to the book, and the book's title, as you can see, is Personalized Learning. So when we talk about personalized learning, we're not just talking about technology, even though that has a lot to do with being able to personalize experiences for children, but it has to do with everything that we do to help and support our kids. So whether it's the RTI process, whether it's our GT program, whatever it is, any way that we can individualize the learning for our students is what's really encompassed in this entire book. So, again, I'm not going to hit everything, but I'm just going to give you a little bit of an overview as we go through this. The first part gets into just talking about FCCPS. Who are we? Who are we as a school division? What's our mission statement? What do we believe in as a school division? It also gets into communication as well, and it talks about, like, our Twitter feeds and how you can follow to see the great things that are going on in Falls Church City Schools because we have a lot of great things. We really are a premier small school division, and we should publicize that, we should celebrate that. So a lot of these Twitter feeds will do that, as well as the morning announcements that John and Carol work on every day during the school year. And it even takes you on to, like, the personalized learning website that John did and explains personalized learning a little bit more as well. And it gets into a little bit about our schools and so on. And then as we go through, it taught, the first thing that we had to address was visionary leadership, and one of the things that we talked about, and when I say "we," there was a committee. We had administrators, we had teachers, instructional technology coordinators, that were all involved in this process. This wasn't done by just one person. So, and you'll see some of the credits at the end, but the credits are just some people that were key people to go to for more information, even though there was a lot more people involved. So here you can see some of you on the school board are up here from when this book was created. And it talks about the process a little bit and how it was a charge to really follow through the personalized learning and make this happen for our school division. Individual leadership, it comes down from school board to central office to individual leadership, and that would be our building administrators. Our building administrators are very key in the process for working with their teachers and students in the building and their philosophy as well about personalized learning. Here you'll see some of our newer admins, since we did have a lot of new ones this year. And this also talks about the action steps and the action plan. So here you'll see, like, year one and how it was a process. It wasn't something that happened overnight. It was thought out, it was planned, and it explains what happened in year one. And the first thing that had to happen was the infrastructure. You can't have the technology working properly if you don't have the infrastructure in place. So I know Rick's team did a whole lot with that. Year two, there was a community visioning that was done, so a lot of stakeholders from the community were involved in that process and discussing what should it look like in Falls Church City Schools and what do we need to do to get there. We had a lot of experts, parents, et cetera, that were involved in that process. And it's also part of the school board work plan. And a lot of these things in here, if you have a chance to really go through this, there's a lot of hyperlinks that take you to certain documents as well, so you can get some more of that information. And then year three, and so on, goes through that action step. And again, I'm not going to go through all of this information here because it's a lot. It's a lot of things. The one thing I do want to do, though, is down here are some audio clips, and these audio clips were all done by the administrators in the buildings. And it pretty much tells, and they talk about their philosophy and their belief and the importance of having personalized learning in their buildings. So I'm going to play this first one, and this is Ty Harris.
I'm Ty Harris, and I'm the principal at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School in Falls Church, Virginia. One of my mantras is that middle school is not just a prerequisite for high school, it is a prerequisite for life. With that being said, it is imperative that schools are providing authentic and engaging learning opportunities for every student, and the use of technology allows our teachers to do that. It allows our teachers to extend the classroom beyond the brick and mortar. Many students that are struggling at the middle school level are dealing with issues outside of the classroom, and so the ability to utilize technology to ensure that they can still access the information is important. Also, sometimes students need to see the material in a different way, and although we want our teachers to differentiate instruction, the truth is that teachers usually go with the delivery style that they're most comfortable with. Technology provides alternate opportunities to explore the content. This really equalizes the playing field because students, no matter what their learning style is, can utilize apps, websites, et cetera, to gain the required information in a manner that is effective for them. Students like technology. They get excited when they get to play review games using Paradox and Socrative, Build Vex robots or Lego rovers. They enjoy creating projects using iMovie and GarageBand. They love being able to share research using Google Docs. As administrator, I find it extremely effective to create Google Forms to gather information and share and organize everything with my staff using Google Drive. Additionally, we are an IB candidate school, and one key component of the IB framework is to provide opportunities for the teachers to serve more as facilitators rather than managers or directors. At Mary Ellen Henderson, students are encouraged to be reflective about their learning and personal growth. This focus on reflection truly prepares the students for success in college and career. One's ability to problem solve and self redirect is critical, and employers want people that they don't have to micromanage. At our school, students create digital journals, blogs, and blogs. Every student has access to a device, and so they can record their thoughts immediately and share them with the world. Overall, I think that we do a very good job of utilizing technology because students love using technology, and many just wouldn't know what to do without it. The world that they know has always offered some advanced device or service, and it would be a shame to not prepare them for a world that is advancing on a daily basis.
And all of the other links that you click on from the other administrators are similar, but it pertains to their building and the developmental ages of the students that are in their building as well. One of the other areas that we had to address was about community engagement and how the community was involved in the process with personalized learning and how we get input from other stakeholders. So one of the things some of you may have been involved in in the past was the community visioning that took place on October 21st. And a lot of the input and feedback from that visioning committee or group really fed the action plan for how things were rolled out over the five years. On this page, you'll also see year four, and year four is when George Mason started with distributing the technology to the students in the building. And then it goes through a little bit and talks about year five and beyond and what our goals are for the future. The other part that's very important are some of the community stakeholders. I'm sure you can recognize Mr. Rankin on here as well. We had a consultant, Mr. Lengel, came in and worked with our staff and our administrators to make sure we had a successful rollout, and they all have, you know, videos that will explain a little bit more about how they feel about the whole thing with personalized learning. The one that I'm going to just kind of show you right now is this one, and it does take us out to our website. And this is Morgan Crafts.
I'm Morgan Crafts. I'm a Director of Technology in our Health Division for Northrop Grumman Corporation. Here we're working on taking advanced technologies across all the sectors on national importance, whether it's intelligence, defense, or health, and trying to take those big analytics, big data analytics, to challenge ourselves, to say, "What are those questions that we can answer by looking at national and global issues and then bring them down to how they may impact you as an individual?" Critical piece for building these new systems for Northrop Grumman in terms of innovation in science and technology is really the fundamentals of STEM. I'm sure you've heard about that in your school, but science, technology, engineering, and math. We're really counting on the high school students to have those core capabilities across all technologies that we might use in the workplace. So by the time you get to colleges and universities, and we work a lot with colleges and universities, the students are already familiar with those tools that are going to be critical for them to engage with us on doing scientific and technology discoveries and innovation over time. We're particularly interested in the rising amount of women who are getting into the engineering field. So it's going to be critical as we move forward. So technology is really not the goal, it's not the objective, it's not the end game. It changes every day. If you think about your own cellphone, every three years or so, we have totally new types of technology. So fundamentally, technology will be an enabler, but each of us has to be ready to do the research and development, to learn new things, and to be ready for that technology to make significant changes as we move forward.
Okay, and he really highlights the importance of preparing our kids for the future and making sure that they have access to the tools that they're going to need to be successful in the real world. And he really highlights the STEM or the STEAM component of it, that it's really about not the technology or the actual tool that they're using maybe now, but they need to have that along with problem solving and so on for their future. And the technology changes. Every six months, a year, it changes drastically from what it used to be.
And can I just say it for Morgan Crafts? He actually was on our committee and came to all of our meetings, which was absolutely amazing, actually. I couldn't believe he found the time to do it, and he still stayed engaged and followed up with us. And those of you, if you look familiar, if you haven't met him, or you might have met him at the city visioning that they had over at the church, he actually came to that. So, and he doesn't live in the city, but it's been a great resource for us to know what's going on truly out in the world.
Mm-hmm. Good. Another area we had to address was innovative learning and teaching, and how personalized learning changed the way teachers were instructing in the classroom, how it made staff more productive, more collaborative, and how it also enhanced the learning of students and offered differentiated opportunities for them to show their understanding in different ways other than just taking a test or writing on a piece of paper or creating a poster board that hangs up, that they could hang up. They could do videos, they can, they could create music compositions, they could do, write do-i books. They had a venue now to choose from based on their interests, and that's how it's transformed their learning. So, and I'm not going to play all of this, but for example, here's one where some high school girls, they were showing their understanding of some math concepts, so they decided to do a rap video. So again, I'm not going to play the whole thing, I'm just going to do the beginning.
Hello. Hi, you want to go to a party with me?
No. We have a capital one.
Oh, I forgot. I'll be right there.
We're like, nah, because we don't care who knows. Race change to broke the day.
We like, nah, because we don't care who knows.
Just, just, just.
We're from Iowa.
No.
Well, at least we can just wait for the class.
Got my notes, my plans, and yeah, it's just two, eight, twelve, fourteen, fifteen.
Record number two, type it right under one.
S to the I to the N to the E.
But don't you do your functions?
Kind of a C.
But I get to get strong, probably beat all night.
If you're going to show up, you can pay a fight.
Okay.
And I'm going to stop here. I think you get the point, okay? So it's just another way, instead of them standing up in front of a class and saying how certain, you know, functions work and so on, they can, they just made a little video, and they showed that to the class. So it was just a fun, innovative way for them to show that they're understanding. Another way is, we have, Ms. Brown had all of her sixth grade kids use iMovie to create documentaries, and they used the primary sources from the Library of Congress, and they were able to actually make those primary sources come to life through the iMovie and using those primary sources. And then it highlights other ways, like in Mount Daniel, they were using a green screen to do something with Martin Luther King Day and expressing what they understood about Martin Luther King and so on through that way. So it's just how has our instruction and how has the teaching and learning of our students evolved and changed with access to technology or just personalized learning and looking at the pedagogy, the way that we're delivering that instruction. So instructional practices, again, it gets into a little bit more like Spheros and STEM and STEAM, and there's the green screen with little Mount Daniel boy standing there was working on that. And then to the left of that, they were working with Spheros in the technology classroom over at the middle school. And then not only do the kids get excited about this, but the teachers do too. So I'm going to show, again, just a short clip, I'm not going to do the whole thing here. These are the fourth grade teachers at TJ.
This is the true story of nine planets formed in the same solar system.
They're existing together.
And having their lives tamed to find out what happens when planets stop being polite and start getting real.
The real world.
Solar system.
Awesome. First one here. It's the solar system.
For some reason, I thought it would be a good idea to invite planets to exist together in a solar system. I can only imagine what kind of orbital debris will collect over these next billion years. We'll just have to wait and see. Right off the bat, I can tell me and the sun are going to be pretty close.
Hey, my dammit's hurt. I'm four and a half billion years old. I'm just here to have a good time.
I'm Saturn. Some might consider me a little flashy. I hope the other planets can handle this.
Boom, you're in my solar system now.
You mess with sun, you've got to get punished.
Well, so far, things are going fine. They tend to get heated, especially when the sun is involved, but I try to stay far away from that.
Okay, I'm going to stop it there. But I think you can get the point. They're using it for instructional videos now, too, for kids to teach them certain concepts. And this is something, too, a lot of teachers have been using the video, so if kids are sick, they can, give them the link, they can get the instruction through the video that way as well. So there's, it's just kind of neat. They're having fun, they're having fun with it. Curriculum design is another component, and as you well know, we are almost a K through 12 IB world school division. We're going through candidacy in November. One of the things with our curriculum design, and I think it was mentioned in the one video from Mr. Harris as well, is we need to look at the technology and making sure that we're integrating that into our curriculum so that it enhances teaching and learning with our kids. So all the teachers, when they're going through the curriculum process, will be aware of that component, building it into that curriculum as they work on it throughout the years. Ongoing professional learning is very important as well. You have to have good professional learning for your staff, and one thing that's always a challenge is that the staff needs differentiated instruction just as much as kids do. And it has to be based on whatever their course area is, their grade level, and so on. So it's not just like a one way of teaching something to the middle for our staff either. So the only way we can really differentiate is a lot of times through using our technology. They all have laptops, there's a lot of online courses they can take. We have a program that's called Edivate where we have a lot of professional development videos. They can go in on their own, choose the topics they want, learn from that, get recertification credit for that, and so on. And we also have, as you know, Steve Knight does a lot of digital learning workshops, and he does a lot of it online, and a lot of times he'll do it at home because with busy schedules and so on, some people don't have a lot of time during the day. So at 8:00 at night, he'll offer a digital online workshop, and teachers can sign up to that, and they can learn something from him and get those recertification points as well. It doesn't have to always be that face-to-face time. So it's relevant and it's timely professional development that we can offer our staff. And here's one of the flyers that Steve will send out, and it has the dates and the topics and so on that are on there that people can sign up for, and it'll say if it's face-to-face or if it's online or so on. Steve and Susan Jenks will talk, they talk a little bit about technology integration and pedagogy and so on. And I'm just going to play one of these clips. These are our teachers, and teachers are from all the buildings from Mount Daniel through GM, and about how the, having access to digital professional learning really has impacted their profession.
I wanted to let you know that I loved the virtual classes this year. As you know, I'm a new mom, and I hated to miss any extra time with her. So the idea that I could actually do the professional development at home after Maisie went to bed was awesome, and I will definitely be doing the virtual classes again next year. So I hope you're planning on doing them.
Okay. And the rest kind of tell their own little stories about how, you know, time-wise, they can go in and they can do certain things without having to be constrained to being at a certain location at a certain time on a certain date. Compelling evidence of success, one of the components was how does personalized learning, how is it really helping and enhancing preparing our students and providing equity? And one of the subgroups that we talk about often are ESOL population. Really, when you're looking at equity, a lot of times, there's always that pool of kids that don't have access like the majority of maybe our other students in the divisions. So equity is very important, and I know that this school board, Dr. Jones, has always said that if they need access, we'll make sure it happens. The Ed Foundation has been very helpful in that process as well, so buying hotspots for those families that don't have that access, and that's what that one little, this one little thing here is a hotspot. And if you click on it, it's very interactive. It tells you what the hotspot is and what it's used for as far as access. And then we also have a short video here of some of, one of our ESOL students and just talking about what it means for him.
But definitely, I use it. It was so confusing because I didn't have to use, I didn't know how to use it before when I don't have the computers, so I don't know how to use. But now I know how to use it better. If you have more time using a computer, you are getting like more experience.
It's all better when you want to watch like a TV show or read something or do math or something else, you just go straight to the computer and find everything.
When you are doing some homework, you can show to the teacher and he can tell you what's missing much better. You can have other things installed. You don't have to bring a lot of books. One thing that is nice here, if you don't know English, you can find vocabulary or words or yes, and it's easier to get in here.
Okay. So, and just so you know, I mean, so proud of him, he was what we call a Level One student when he came to us. Level One basically means he knew no English at all when he came to us. And this video was done about a year after he arrived in Falls Church City. So, I mean, for him, in one year to learn that much English and be able to communicate, I mean, he's really done well, so it was very nice for him to be able to do that video. This is a digital timeline, I'm not going to go through it too much, but this kind of goes back through the five-year action plan, and it's a timeline of everything, you know, that's been done over the five years in the different buildings to roll out personalized learning with our students. And then compelling evidence gets into a little bit about, you know, how, what kind of data do we have? And this was a teacher-student survey that was sent out on learning with personalized learning, and this is some of the data that came back, and somebody may have seen this you may not have. So when the teachers were surveyed, that 86% of the teachers felt technology was changing the way they teach in a positive way. 96% of the teachers felt that technology has helped them to respond to a variety of learning styles. Again, that's part of differentiating. 93% felt technology helped them to differentiate the teaching more effectively. 92 use technology in a classroom on a weekly basis. And then we also surveyed students. 94% of students feel that it's important to 94% of students feel that it's important to their learning. 86 felt it increased their productivity for the year and so on. And then we got into a little bit about our data and, and again, it's not all about technology. It's just about who we are as a school division and how our students perform. And we're a high-performing school division and our kids, you know, we should be proud of the accomplishments that, that they made. Now it's going to be temperamental, now let me out of here. There we go. And there's a little more data in there. Flexible learning environment was another area to address and it was like, how are we not a traditional school system with, with the chairs and desks in a row? You know, how do we, how are we innovative was really what this was all about. What makes us unique in Falls Church City schools? How, how do we, you know, look at the needs of our kids, whether it's through the high C program, whether it's like classrooms, the way teachers set up their classrooms with beanbags or yogurt balls or, you know, outside classrooms or, you know, that type of thing. That's not that traditional approach to that learning environment, that we're, we're unique and we're innovative in a lot of ways with our, the way our teachers do things. And then we're looking at the learning spaces as well. A banker space was put in the MEH library area and also in the GM library area. And I know that Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel are working on areas as well. So those are learning environments for our students. Again, it's not just all about the laptop. It's about technology and access to different equipment, different tools, different types of technology that our kids can go in and explore and be creative and, and actually create things and problem solve. Information technology was, was another component we had to address. How's our infrastructure in our buildings? Can it handle certain types of technology? That's our Wi-Fi, you know, our hotspots and that's the, this team right here, you know, Rick's team have done a lot through PK through 12th grade, making sure that we have that access at our fingers, fingertips for the technology to work. And then we also have our students and how do we involve our students in this process? And we have at, at GM especially, they have a, an area, a tech space where if any other students had problems, they don't have to wait for the tech team to come help them. They have their peers that are knowledgeable, that are volunteering their, their time, you know, to work at the desk and be able to help the other students with changing passwords, logging in problems, you name it. So they're also learning a real world skill as well as they're doing that. And then that's pretty much it. It, we have, the credits are in the back. We had to identify people to contact for each of those categories for the book. And it was published on the iTunes store and anybody can download it for free. So, and that, that's really it. It's really just talking about who we are as a division, why we're innovative, why are we that little premier school division in the nation? What, what makes us stand out? It's really showcasing and highlighting those, those types of things. So, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions?
How often is, is this something that needs updating on a constant basis?
It's up to us. And, and I, I do try to go in because I think it's important because it's, it's, we should showcase who we are, you know? And I, I think that it's important to put that out there. So I, I go in every now and then when I have some time and I try to update some of the pictures and things like that that change up. Like you saw the administrators and the, the data I need to update yet too. And I'll just republish it up to the website. The one on the iTunes is the older one. I haven't had a chance to put this one up yet because I'm still working on it. But yeah, it's up to us. They, we don't have to. So. Any other question?
Other questions, comments?
I, I just comment that I really liked what I saw. It was really.
There's a lot of people involved. It's like, yeah.
There's a good, a good infrastructure in getting the teachers on board and, and understanding the technology, it seems. It's really unique to the school system. We don't have that everywhere.
I, I mean, I've been here 12 years and since we rolled this out, I mean, I came from a school division, was a blue collar school division in Pennsylvania. We had much more technology for many more years than Falls Church ever did when I first came. It shocked me. I'm like, where's the technology? So, so to not have it was like for me, stepping back in time. And to get it was, it was time to do that. And our teachers, I mean, I was a teacher here in Falls Church City and they struggled at first because it was change, but now when, and I want to update this too to showcase because now when you take a look at a lot of our teachers and how innovative they are and how good they are with using the technology, a lot of times they'll go to workshops and they will be amazed about other school divisions. They, they can't believe they don't have access to certain things. They don't know what Padlet is. They don't know what Socrative is. They, our teachers use these things every day in their classroom and to take that away from them would be like detrimental to their profession if we tried to do that. So we, we should be proud of our teachers and, and what they do and our kids. Yeah, thanks.
For sure. Any other questions, comments? I'd just say, The Washington Post tends to have a habit of overlooking the good things that happen in Falls Church on things such as technology. On September 2nd, they talked about Fairfax County coming up with some great ideas about one-to-one use of technology and talking about some other places such as Arlington. And obviously our thought leadership there establishes that we're several years ahead of them.
We're ahead of them, yes.
Is it us? Arlington came to visit us last year.
Yes, that's right. We have a lot of divisions that come visit us and Arlington was one of them.
I, I had dinner with a family in Falls Church yesterday and their son was talking about how much he's enjoying high C math, which he's, he's going to be taking this semester. And he says it's much better for him and his learning style. So it's good to see real, real kids saying they, they're not running away from high C.
Oh, no.
I think the Student Cooperative for helping with IT is great. They, they do that at, two of my kids at their school, they also have that and I think that's a great thing. And one of my other daughters was saying the other day that the, the ability to collaborate online, to, to have a dialogue at nine o'clock with your teacher to change, exchange suggestions, drafts, markups, really makes for a completely different learning environment. So it's, it's quite, it's quite impressive. So, thank you.
Thanks, Janie.
All right. Well, thank you for coming here this evening, Ms. Seabridge.
Do we need to get it later? We'll have to. No, I think we're okay. Yeah. Just wanted to turn it off.
Yeah, you can turn it off. You're fine.
All right. Next on our agenda is item 3.02, disposition of public comment.
Jump in? Yeah. And so this was one of the school board requested items and, you know, Marty and I did a little research probably two months ago since we did it actually, where we called around to Fairfax, called Arlington and really quite frankly, everybody deals with the same thing, was not really that helpful unless we were talking about maybe changing some sort of policy where, depending on which district you talk to, where it's more controlled actually in public comment, where they can only address things that are on the agenda or we're totally wide open. But for the most part, other school divisions are struggling with the same thing in that people come, they give public comment and trying to find a person who can actually respond to that public comment is challenging because nobody has the staff to do it in any of the school divisions in this area. And most of the school board members haven't been able to take that on either. So this was again, an item that was requested to have on the agenda. I'm not sure what, you know, what the answer is, but I know, I think at, at the city council, they will actually refer and at least do some verbal on some of those things. And I think we probably could do that. I do know on, from a staff side, we, we can't respond to all of the public comments. We just, we wouldn't have time to do it. So I turn it over to you because it's really a school board discussion on what thoughts the school board has on how you want to handle that.
So, you know, there, there are multiple inputs, obviously, as, as Dr. Jones outlined. And I'm not sure, you know, whether and to what extent we want to develop or change processes for the way we handle some of these inputs. So I, I think we're sort of starting fresh. It's a greenfield kind of situation. So I'm, I'm, I have no notions here of what is the right or the wrong answer. So I would be happy to entertain and Mr. Webb, maybe based on some of your experiences, you can illuminate us as to what the path forward might be.
Is there a way that, and I agree that that's probably, it's probably very difficult of the, the number of requests that potentially come during, during public comment of responding back to them all. Is there a way that we can potentially prioritize what seems to be something that we can within reason respond back to in a, in a designated period of time?
You mean for the staff to respond?
Yeah. Well, because even for us, I think to respond, it's going to be, we're going to call, more likely have to ask questions of you all depending upon what it is because you're going to have the quicker access to some potential data that may be very important to giving the proper response. I think, I'll speak for myself, you know, I would be willing to, but I know I'm going to have to work with you, Lisa, Hunter, depending upon what the, the question is to make sure before responding back that you are giving the right information. So then, so that doesn't circle back and you're, you're caught giving the wrong information and then someone's calling you on it.
Yeah. I mean, I think we certainly could try to do a verbal response at the next meeting and know that on things we can't respond to, we can't because sometimes it depends, it depends on what the public comment is. If it's going to take six hours of research for us to go and pull stuff, we just may not have the staff to do it. And so that's, that's part of the challenge is that, you know, I mean, Marty is your, you know, she works on behalf of the board and sets the agenda. I don't have a secretary that does stuff like that. We just, we have, you know, not added staff at central office for the last three years, which you're aware of. We just, we don't have the, we just don't have the staff. We don't have the resources. So we certainly could try to do verbal and, and do, you know, the very best that we could. I would be nervous about responding and writing to some and not to others. And it's like, whatever we're going to do, we need a, a good, solid process, but.
I think what we, I mean, I think it's important to respond to the public in some way, whether to either, maybe sometimes I've noticed that some public speakers are not, they're not well-informed. And even just directing them to the facts, you know, not sitting there and doing the six hours worth of work, but saying, please refer to these websites and, and we can do that in a meeting format instead of, I, I don't feel com, feel comfortable for you giving your office any more work to do because I know you're all overworked over there. And really truthfully, I don't know about any of you, but I couldn't possibly undertake that as, you know, to, to do it on my own. So, or any one of us. I don't think has the time. I know I don't. But I think if we address things, you know, in general, oftentimes I've noticed there's, when there is public comment, several people will comment about the same topic. So we can, like I said, we, in the night, we listen to what they have to say and then provide them either with the, the correct information at the following meeting or provide them with the resources where they can find that information on their own. And I think that's probably, the latter is probably the better way to go about it because some people don't know how to navigate this websites and things. This will help them be better informed citizens.
Well, I think another thing that's important is to, is to kind of do some upfront triage. Oftentimes when somebody writes something that's very clear, you can say, okay, this needs this particular action. A lot of times somebody writes a comment and I'll say, you know, give me a call. I'd, I'd love to discuss this with you. Oftentimes it seems I don't get that call. And so sometimes I think people just want to have their say and then they're fine, in which case an acknowledgement would be sufficient. So, you know, I think one of the things that we could try to do is figure out, you know, do you, do you want, what kind of information do you want? What kind of conversation do you want so that we don't respond in an overly or underly inclusive math approach?
Exactly. And, and I think too, when it comes to, I don't, I think we need to respond to people's direct questions. And I know sometimes we do get, we'll get emails and we should maybe have something prepared at the following meeting or in the, within the next two meetings to respond to that with facts. But I really feel oftentimes a public comment that's generated isn't, is because of lack of full information. It's not necessarily misinformed, but not fully informed. And, and, and like, once we get into routine of directing our citizens to go where they need to go to find out the information, I think you'll see less and less of these comments if they're getting the facts themselves and, and actually understanding what's going on. Does that make sense to anybody? I just, I feel like that's, I think that's the way to go.
I think one of the issues is a lot of times you end up answering the same questions over the course of several weeks or months, you know? I mean, it's sometimes considered as a long-term project.
Well, you, you refer people back to the original response. Here's what we said in this meeting. It's going to be in the minutes. People have access to the minutes. Here are the directions. Here's what you need to do. Here's where you're going to find this. Here's where you're going to find that. You know, you need further explanation, let us know.
You still have to have somebody that does that though. And what, and I'm not trying to push back on that because I, I hear what you're saying, but somebody has to go find the right meeting, onboard docs and it's that, even that sometimes is pretty, it can be time-consuming trying to remember, was that in June or July or then you're going in and checking the agendas because when you search, it just doesn't come up or.
I think at that point, it could be the onus should be on the person making the inquiry and we could say this was discussed in the spring. Please refer to the minutes and find whatever you need. Because we just don't have time. If someone's that interested and that concerned, they're going to take the time to look it up.
Well, I guess that raises the question, have we made our materials as searchable and easily used as possible so that that is something that you can do? And if not, we probably should because we'd save ourselves some time.
Absolutely.
Mr. Reedy.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, clearly we haven't made them as searchable as we can, but I don't know that we can. For example, I, I feel Dr. Jones' pain because on occasions I've said, what meeting did I say that in? And I'm going into board docs and there's no way with the search engine to find it. So you're literally going up and paging through each of the meetings to try and figure out where a particular topic came up. And it can just eat hours. I'd suggest that we consider a couple of things. One, I remember when we talked to Ms. Patterson, the head of the VSBA. My recollection is that she said that responding to public comment is something that is normally done by boards and it's normally done by the chair as opposed to everyone. I don't know if that's true or not, but it feels to me that there are certain categories. You, what, there are certain questions that you can't answer because they involve student data or other sorts of pieces or ongoing litigation or legal matters. There are other that are very specific and detailed and as Dr. Jones suggested, you just can't get into because it's like, you know, who shot John in 1978? And it's just not useful for most people to go back and figure that out. But there are topics that come up again and again, and there are questions that come up, as I think Ms. Ward is saying, where, if you just appoint a person to the right direction. For example, sometimes we'll hear a public comment, for example, on awards from commercial entities and there'll be several comments about that. I think at the end of that, the chair could just say something like, thank you for your comments. We're going to be talking about that topic on such and such a day because you've got the future agenda piece laid out. So I, I just, I wonder if it's possible to do a couple of things. One, to have the chair respond generally to the extent he can to topics that come up. Not saying that you will respond to everything or, but you know, just sort of summarizing and making a few general comments without committing the board to spending several hours in a debate on a particular topic. And secondarily, I was, I was taken by, and there was some criticism of this as well, but I thought what the administration tried to do with the bus stop questions on the budget last year was useful. I just wonder if one could, you know, that could be either bus stop questions or school board questions or something. And periodically as topics come up regularly in public comment, the, the administration and Mr. Brett could make an effort, you know, not to hit all of them, but you know, every few weeks or so often to, in one of the communications, say, here's a question that came up generally, here's the background on the data. And so it's just keep trying to communicate a little better. And certainly, you know, you could also, at the end of a public comment, the next time, if there was something that, you know, you discovered more on or the board discovered more on, refer to something from the last public comment. So I would say, try to deal with it within the parameters of the resources we've got and honestly communicate with people, but not take on the burden of researching any question that's raised. I mean, I, I also feel your pain because, you know, I, we all get a lot of email questions. I still try to respond to most emails that I get and, but sometimes it's just not possible. And it's not reasonable to ask the school administration to research each and every one of those questions. So that's my two cents.
Other thoughts?
I do like the, the idea of questions that perennially come up and if there's, if we can do some work on that and then do that.
FAQ.
FAQ type of deal like that for some of those ones that did you, that can continue to come up. Because I think with those type of questions that they, you perennially hear those in public comment, we probably need to figure out how to give the feedback and data. to come up, because I think with those type of questions, that they, you perennially hear those in public comment, we probably need to figure out how to give the feedback and data for, for, for those in particular. And I guess that's what I meant by looking at certain ones that you hear regularly, figuring out how to, to respond to those, because I agree that, you know, there are some that, as.
Mr. Redinger said, that we get inundated with, even us, when there's a particular big topic, we get a lot of emails from, from citizens that you wanna respond to them all, but you almost come to a point of trying to come up with a fairly generic, can something to make sure that you've at least responded back to them and, and hopefully give them the, that, you know, this topic is gonna come up and, and hopefully you will be there when we have a little bit more of a pertinent topic on it. But I can't necessarily do a deep dive into this right now, because there, the other 15 emails waiting on some, me to try to say something back to, so that I'm at least being responsive to them.
Ms. Gill.
So when I originally suggested this as an item, it was to set up a triage system. And one of the items that comes to mind that, you know, kind of got shuffled away, that would have been nice for us to respond to, was the football. Are we gonna get rid of football? We got a lot of emails on that and I don't know that we ever really responded to those parents. That's a pretty easy response to say, you know, this is not an item that's on our agenda right now, thank you for your attention. You know, I had a lot of parents saying, you're getting rid of football? When, when's football going away? And I was like, ah, football's not going away, it's not even on our agenda. Do you know, one person came to a meeting and made a comment that we should get rid of football. And, you know, the word spread throughout the football community, parents, and they were legitimately concerned, they were getting rid of football. And I don't think we ever really responded to that. So, you know, that's just something that, it's like, that's a pretty easy, there are some things that come in that are, I think, pretty easy for us to just knock out. And again, it should be, you know, one, whether it's the chair, the vice chair, one person, I don't think it should be, as it comes in, somebody on the, random on the school board does it, that's probably inappropriate, but designate the point person, just to get some of those low-hanging fruit questions that come in that we can really quickly respond to and then not just ignore, because it's not on our agenda, it's not gonna come up in a meeting. And then we've just got misinformation flying around the, the community, so.
My first job out of college was as legislative correspondent.
There you go. You're prepared, Ally. Get the necessary credentials for the job.
Every time I think I'm out, they drag me back in. Well, I think we, it sounds as if what we should do is try something of this nature of a bit of a sorting, you know, I'll get questions, personnel or student-related things and those have their own treatment, you know, you pass those on to Dr. Jones for disposition. So I, I would be happy to try that approach and I can copy the board and we can see how that works.
And you've done a little bit of that.
Yeah.
With certain, certain topics that have come to all of us and you've been the person who's responded back and just included us on it. So, I mean, I think that definitely works, that it, that we're in the loop, that it's being responded to and we're, I think at that point, we're good, that we know that they've at least heard back from someone.
Okay.
And then, is it possible, and it might not be good form or it might not be the way we do things, but is it possible to respond, have a response after public comment, to respond briefly? Or is that not?
I think, I don't know what the, what your thoughts are on that.
I suppose it depends on the question.
I was just gonna say, very much so.
Yeah, that's like, that's the triage system, right? Some things are, you know, we should address this right now and it's, because some of you can.
I would suggest some deliberation before response might be good.
I mean, there's that too, but if it's something simple, like, Aaron, I pointed out, the football issue. I mean, that could be, you know, addressed, done off the table and I don't have to worry about it, instead of letting it linger and let people worry and get all worked up about something that doesn't exist. I mean, is that, I know, I believe, yes, deliberation is necessary for certain questions or for certain comments, but for some, I think.
Well, I mean, I guess, for example, let's say somebody says, somebody comes up and says, I think we should get rid of soccer because of concussions. Should we respond right there and say, we have no present plans to do that? Because on the one hand, that's very quick and responsive, on the other hand, it suggests, you know, that's, that suggestion's dead on arrival.
Thank you for your concern. You know, we have no plans at this time, I mean, if it's.
Well, you could say, it's not currently on our radar, but we'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, I mean, and now we will, right?
Yeah. Other thoughts?
I, I agree with what Ms. Ward just said. I think it's, quicker and shorter is often better. I would not respond after each comment, but, you know, one of the things I think I was suggesting before is that you do a summary, the chair do a summary response at the end. Not bothering, not responding to every question, but where there are quick and easy things to say, to say them at that point in time. And I don't think you need to commit the board to anything, but one of the things I've learned from the many, many times I've testified in front of Congress, is that you, you never say, I'll get back to you on that, if you can possibly avoid it. Because getting back to someone later or in writing generates such a volume of work. It's much better to give a, you know, that's not on our agenda right now, or we're gonna be looking at this in the future, or just thank you for your comment, the board will consider the other comments raised during the course of its future deliberations. At least lets people know that they've been heard. It's completely up to whatever the board wants to do. I don't think there's a right answer here, but I think one of the things that we wanna do is send the message that we're listening to the things the public says and respond quickly where we can, because, you know, an immediate response is much more meaningful to most people than a much more fulsome response a week later.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's give that a try and then let's, let's see how we're doing, you know, November 1st.
Well, we, and we won't, you know, we, it'll take some time to refine this, so we shouldn't throw in the towel after if it's not successful.
Just a little check in, just see how it's going.
Yeah, I think, I think we should. Give it a whirl.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? All right, so let's now go to this question on closed session.
Let me keep that up.
Just please.
This again was a school board requested item. And on the closed session, what we did provide for you on board docs is, is the sheet that actually comes from VSBA that lets you know, you know, how do we actually make a decision on what goes in closed session? And it is very prescriptive in that it has to fit into one of these items, otherwise, you know, it's not something we should be discussing enclosed. And we try to be very thoughtful and mindful of that. And I will say, you know, and I think this is a good time to say it, that we have had more closed meetings, we've also had more meetings. You know, as you remember, we talked, I think it was at our last meeting, the one before, where we had gone from having 25-ish meetings a year to over 50. And on top of that, we've also had a lot of issues that require closed session. Mount Daniel has needed a lot of closed sessions over the last year and a bit. George Mason has required closed sessions. We've also had, as you remember, the petition earlier last year, which required closed sessions. We also had some safety issues with a court trial that was going on. There's just, there's been a lot, but it has to fit into one of these areas, otherwise it's not enclosed. And so, and of course, personnel is enclosed. So I just share that with you in case this is a document that you have not seen before. And when Marty or I are unclear about where something fits, we go to Mr. Horne as our legal advisor to help us understand the best way to put that on the agenda.
Questions, thoughts, comments? Mr. Lawrence.
Actually, a question for Tom. Things on this list. If, if something fits on this list, do we even have the option to talk about it in open?
You do. The, the elements of the Freedom of Information Act are discretionary to the body, with the caveat, of course, that there are risks of disclosing certain things for student privacy matters, personnel privacy matters, where there may be an aggrieved party because you've chosen to discuss it in public. So going into closed is your choice, it's never required by the act, but there may be other reasons why the board is compelled to discuss something only enclosed. Does that help?
Okay.
Yes.
Well, what about our fiduciary obligations? How does that play into the?
Well, that, and those, those are the additional risks that I was talking about.
Could you elaborate on?
Yeah, so let's say, we'll use a construction project as a, for instance, while you, you may have the discretion not to discuss ongoing contract negotiations and/or acquisition of land or things like that, you may have the discretion not to go enclosed, you may have some contractual terms that would expose you to liability for breach of contract. You have proprietary confidential, confidential information that is protected under the Code of Virginia, when submitted under certain acts like the PPA. So there are other reasons why certain topics must be enclosed, but it's not because of the Freedom of Information Act in all cases.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Other thoughts, questions? Mr. Reiden.
So, I'll break the issues into, they're sort of a, they're both, they're all procedural, but the meeting procedure and sort of the what we do in closed session part. I'll start with the what we do in closed session part, because that's where, what we've been discussing so far. I, I think, and this is one of the things that Mr. Sharp said to me at one point, there's sort of three categories, things that can't be enclosed, things that have to be enclosed, you know, like personnel decisions and the big chunk of stuff in the middle. What I'm most concerned about is that we minimize that stuff in the middle and wherever possible, talk about it in open session. Now, there's some places where we certainly don't, if we're talking about land acquisition or those sorts of things, we don't wanna undermine the bargaining position of the schools or the city. I think there are places where we could lean a bit more aggressively and there's no way to write this down, I don't think, other than how you exercise it. But, you know, I, as, as I think most of the people on the board know, as, and might have earned me some displeasure, I started voting on the PPA matters a while into the process to not go into closed session, because I thought we could do our deliberations in open session. I don't think there was anything wrong with going into closed sessions, the, you know, sec, number 19, I think it is, A19. I spent a fair amount of time analyzing what the board had done over time in terms of closed sessions and we've gone into, or since I, we, the board started going into a lot more closed sessions around the time, around a couple of years ago, around when the PPA started to come, come up. And I think, I think we just ought to lean, to the extent we can, towards discussing things openly, because I think this is that kind of city where people expect to be involved. The other thing, and I, I think I brought one of this topic up originally, and the board has actually in the last nine months or so, gone pretty far to address this, I thought there ought to be changes in closed meeting procedure in terms of how we schedule them. Yet, at least when I was looking before I joined the board last year, it seemed to me that the common procedure was to always start with the closed session and that that, and it wasn't, it was actually a city council thing, but I, pardon me if I told you guys about this before, but I, I remember showing up at a city council meeting where my daughter was to get, you know, recognized for some piece of art she did as like a seventh or seven-year-old or something, she was at Mount Daniel at the time, and the city council went to closed session and, you know, came back out about 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night and my kids are all like, you know, like the school were meeting a few years, they're fallen over sleeping. And she didn't, she doesn't have any memory of that at all. That's all to say, I think we need to try and do a couple of things. One, we always ought to try to do public comment first if we can. Second, I think it's, it's generally better to do the closed session at the very end of the meeting or when only non-public interest stuff is at the end of the meeting, when we can. And when we can't do those two things, you know, maybe we're doing a closed session where we're gonna talk about a resolution of a personnel matter and there's a member of the audience that's sitting there, waiting to hear about their future, and you wanna do that at the beginning. I just think we ought to try to, in that case, have the chair, as you have been doing, estimate the amount of time that we're gonna be in closed session, or maybe set a time certain. I'd sent around a, a rule change that would do that, I think, like in January or even in December before I joined. I don't think that's necessary one way or the other. I just think our board practice ought to be to try to schedule things that way. And like I said, I think we've come pretty far in doing that. We still get, you know, people get upset when there's a closed meeting that lasts an hour at the start, but on at least one occasion, I know we've had a time certain start for the regular meeting. And there's, you know, I can't say I've agreed with every decision in terms of how that's done, but I would expect to agree with every decision. So if we can, if we can make administrative efforts to follow that set of rules, if in fact, the board agrees with that set of principles, then I think we've done what we can do.
Yeah, I think, before the PPA process occurred, closed meetings were very innocuous occurrence.
And brief.
They happened for a few minutes, there was, there were personnel issues, occasional, I, I know people on boards where a third of their time is spent on student disciplinary matters, not here. So the PPA process, obviously, and some of these other projects have created a situation that frankly was unfamiliar to us and there were things that we encountered, that we hadn't encountered before. I think we're adapting well, or fairly well. I think, you know, with respect to the timing of closed meetings, sometimes if council is billing at X hundred thousand dollars per hour, you know, that, that has weight and you get, you get council in, you get council out. So I, I think that's, that's a good thing to keep in mind. You know, where, where closed should be, I am somewhat agnostic, but I would think that it's, you know, it's not the dessert that you save for last, it's something that you have to get through and I guess if, you know, doing it when the fewest people around are inconvenienced by it is, is worth doing when and if, when and if possible. I think on the issue of what to put in closed, I think we've done a good job. I, I think the, you know, the PPA process was what it was, we were groping our way through it and I think as a general matter, it's, you know, prudence given, given our obligations to the taxpayers of the city, best to, if we're going to err, let's err on the side of caution, so as to not expose ourselves to, to additional costs. You know, if there are other matters, other questions, where sometimes, I have not heard anybody say, could this be an open instead of closed? If and when that happens, please let me know, because we should have a discussion about that. I would also say that we should always be mindful of what is and isn't enclosed and if we should stray in some situation, we should remind ourselves of that. You know, we don't, I wish we could tell people what was enclosed, because it's really not very interesting and it's usually, and it's, it's always closed for a reason. It's, it's much more interesting if you don't know what's going on than if you do. So, you know, with that in mind, if, if there are other concerns or questions, by all means, please raise them, so that we can continue to be as, as, you know, there is that balance of openness and our obligations as fiduciaries and we need to be mindful of those as well. So, any other thoughts?
I just wanted to point out, with, with some of the longer closed sessions, it, it was because we were trying to learn about these processes. I was not familiar with PPA, I don't know how many other people were, and, and some other issues that came up and I found that, especially when we had an attorney present, we'd be asking, you know, their presentation would precipitate questions from us, that we wanted clarification. And that, you know, what the public did not know is that we weren't discussing some really interesting details, we were just trying to educate ourselves in what the process was, you know, what our options were. So, yes, it probably does come across and we're in there for 45 minutes, that we're, we're discussing some really, something very important, when all it is, we're just getting enlightened.
Yes, I agree, thank you. Other thoughts? Mr. Lawrence.
No, I would just say that I think Phil's right, the changes we've made go in the right direction. We have been trying to minimize, we're, we're trying to schedule it so it's at least inconvenient for others, which, another way to say it is, probably it's more inconvenient for us. But I think it's ironic that, you know, if you wanna find seven people who dislike closed sessions more than anybody, it's probably us, because we do know what goes on in there and it's, it's not overly thrilling. So, yeah, I think we should keep doing what we've been doing for about the past year.
Okay. All right. Well, there's nothing else on that, we can proceed next to item 3.04, discussion of our first work plan. Dr. Jones.
And you have two documents that are on here and then you do have hard copies, just because we know sometimes it's easier for you if you wanna make notes on a hard copy. On the triennial plan, the priorities, taking your comments from last week, some things that Mr. Rediger also sent yesterday and trying to update this one last time, there are some things that were. are some things that were suggested that are not in here, certainly that will be open for discussion for if school board members want it in or not. What I've tried to do is look at work that was already, the priorities that were set that we're in the middle of, and you can't just kind of toss them out, and then what are the things that we're going to focus on for the year. I'm going to look at the work plan, and it's always lengthy, so I'll apologize before I kind of walk you through it, but with the work plan, we actually have 65 key action items instead of 62 that are in here, and it's looking at what is the school board priority that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks. And on the first one, Priority 1.0, which is right there on page two, it's talking about the staff review of the performance and growth system. That was, that's going to be a huge task for us this year. We expect to have that committee put together by October because we need to get working, working on that right away. We also do want to survey the staff about what are some of those choices, and the committee will make, make that decision on what questions they want to ask, which they did last time. What are the questions that they want to get from their colleagues? Keeping in mind that we are governed by Virginia code on things like, we have to have seven standards, we have to count 40% on student achievement, those are things that we don't have any leeway in. Then also issuing the TEL survey for the second year to get comparison data on the eight different constructs, that's something that our principals really want to do, and I think they've taken it on as a kind of a personal challenge in their buildings when they were studying the survey data this summer, and, you know, they have set some goals for their own buildings and what they want to accomplish. And then also issuing a support staff survey, but more than just a climate survey for them, we really feel like we need to be surveying them about the budget process in regards to salary and adequate staffing. That is a main priority for us right now that we are hearing from our support staff. Later on tonight, I'll talk about our enrollment growth, but it is challenging, to say the least, this year, and our support staff are those areas where we have not added staff really in a decade, and we are feeling it, really feeling it. Also looking at, making sure the principals stay highly engaged in visiting classrooms and leading instruction and being able to support them in that. By FY '18, we really will be at that point where we would like to get that special education administrator at Mount Daniel, and we need somebody in the office at Jesse Thackeray. Right now, we have a supervisor, she literally, you know, serves breakfast, and now that program has grown again over the last two and a half years, we need to get them some assistance there, and so that is just an item to continue to support them. The teacher pay, one of the changes you'll see on Priority 1.2, this used to always say 3%, the board verbally called it out last year and said 3% to 5%. And if you, as you remember, we were in the budget this year, we have closed the gap between 3% and 4.9, so we're right in, we're right in that zone right now, but it's making sure we continue that. And then the teacher turnover data, which we have kept, and Lisa will present that, I think in the next week or two, for this year, and then she has the previous two years as well, and making sure that we stay within that national trend. And nationally, it's 70, 17% is the average nationally of what you expect for your turnover in a school system, and are we staying within that target zone? Then on Priority 1.3 is differentiated professional development, and this comes straight out of the TEL survey as well, and so it's really providing, which you heard tonight when Jeannie was sharing, more of the online, kind of web-ready for our teachers so that it's on-demand, when they need it, when they want it, differentiating at the school sites for different levels for teachers. And then it's trying to get that construct rate of agreement from 34 to 40. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a really tough thing for us to do, so it's going to be kind of little baby steps. Differentiation is just difficult. It's often difficult for us to offer different levels that matches where the teacher thinks they really are. So sometimes as a teacher, I may think I'm a really advanced skill set until I get into a room with people who are really advanced, for instance, and then you realize, oh my goodness, it's kind of what Jeannie was talking about when our teachers go to professional development in the summer, they realize how far ahead they are. We had a teacher just sharing it last week. Then also collecting staff feedback from the divisions on school-wide professional development, and we'd like to see that go from 29 to 40 again in how it's evaluated and the results are communicated, and this was something the principals wanted to focus on. And they felt like it's a pretty easy, it's an easier thing for them, they thought, to get feedback on because we just, they haven't necessarily done follow-up surveys with all of their professional development, and they feel like they could do a better job with that.
We actually have already started, Jeannie created a survey to go out about our professional development for the start of schools and our new teacher induction stuff. We're trying to gather data to meet the needs of the teachers.
And that was, that was again from our principal team, they all have that kind of on their radar of something they think they can do a little bit better at.
Tony, in terms of the staff feedback forms, what percentage do you get back? Does everybody have to?
Actually, what did you get on this last one, Jeannie, do you know?
It's only been out since Friday, and I think I have 60 staff members have already responded.
So about 25% right now.
I'm looking at about half the staff. About 50% would be good to get back a response rate on.
Okay, I mean, should that be one of the targets in here is my point? Because if you get few enough back, it doesn't necessarily tell you anything.
We keep pushing it out until we hit that magic.
A lot of teachers just don't like to take surveys, so, like our TEL survey, we did really well, and I think, I think it will do really well again, getting people to, once a year, they know it's there, but after every professional development, it's just annoying to some teachers, so, I mean, we can keep encouraging it, but they're just so busy. It's like one more survey, one more thing to do, so, yeah, we try to keep them short.
How long do they take?
Two minutes, maybe at the most, if they really think about it.
Can you give them a chance at a Starbucks gift card or something to?
You have some?
We did some of that stuff like that at the end of last year, actually, with BIE.
I mean, seriously, I'm not, I'm, I'm, whatever, if that, if that will move the needle, maybe we should think about that.
That's true, they're anonymous.
Well, but, well, but it's anonymous, but one of the anonymous, okay.
We really don't know.
If this was your anonymous response, come pick up your Starbucks gift card.
It's sitting in the box marked.
Be honest.
There's a will, there's a way.
But we do think that we'll, we're going to, we have already started, I think, is what they're saying, and the principals are very aware when they do site-based, and they want to get feedback too, are we offering the right things, and what could we do better on that? On Priority 1.4 is providing clear information for teachers on the amount of non-instructional time available, which is unencumbered. And what that means is, when the principal team met on planned time, for instance, teachers generally will say they don't have enough planned time, but we, as a school division, cannot have any more planned time than what we have now. We couldn't afford to do it, and we would have children not in class when they need to be having core content. We have some of the highest planned time in the country, but we do think we can do a much better job, and it's, this is really building specific, it's not, some buildings are much better than others, and the principals are very aware of that. What they're trying to do is make sure they're not just ad hoc, this week I have a meeting Monday, Wednesday, and it's during your plan, and then the next week, it might be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then the next week it's on early release. So they're trying to be very systematic about how much unencumbered planned time do you have, that's your planning time, and if a fourth grade team chooses to collaborate together, they can, or if it's, or if the team really just, that's going to be the time, they get to choose what they do with that, so that those professional trainings that have to take place are very, very much on certain days of the week, so they know exactly what their schedules look like. And as we get bigger, that's been a challenge for us, because when we were teeny-tiny, it was just pretty easy to get four or five people around the table and decide when you're going to meet, but now you're, it's just having your whole team together could be a challenge, because the teams are big, especially when you add in reading specialists and math specialists and all of those other people. Do you have anything, Lisa?
I was just saying, we're, we're working hard to have administrators communicate what is planning time and what happens during that planning time. Planning time could be collaborating, it could be professional development, all of that, but the unencumbered part means this is your time to do what you need to do, whether it's by yourself or with a group of your colleagues. So just making sure that teachers understand, communicating that if you have 400 minutes of planning time, it doesn't mean that entire time is just yours, because we have to have time for you to collaborate with your colleagues and work with your administrators and specialists to help improve student achievement, so that's what, trying to make sure we do that.
And how often does this reporting have to occur? Is this like one times, like here's, here's what it looks like and that will suffice?
It's usually by, for the year, they create a schedule for the year. The administrators say on certain days, and they work with the teachers to determine, you know, is Monday going to be a team planning time, and then Tuesday through Friday is your own time, is early release Wednesdays, are we meeting the entire time or just a portion of the time? But that's individual by schools who are deciding that, and depending on the focus areas as well.
So I have a few comments on these two sections, now's a good time to talk about that. The, I, I agree quite much that we do need to look at the professional development results, and that's a good place to focus a lot of efforts. The first thing I'd note is, the two that you've pulled out in the work plan under 1.3, we've set a really low bar for what we want to achieve. I mean, the provide, the professional development is differentiated to meet the individual needs of teachers. Yes, we were at 34, we say we're going to raise it to 40, but Fairfax was at 65%. Alexandria was at 54. North Carolina was at 68, and Kentucky was at 70.6 system-wide. If we can't meet Kentucky, then, I mean, we, let's at least be honest about it, we ought to set a higher bar than 40%. And the same for the other one, 29 to 40% for professional development is evaluated and communicated. Yes, it's differentiated a little bit by school with one school having a lower result, but there's that. Again, we are below, I think, everything but Alexandria, oh, there. We were at 29, Fairfax was at 83, Alexandria 46, North Carolina 66, and Kentucky 68. So I think we can set higher goals even if those are the pieces that we select to pull out. I think we ought to, you know, and I don't know what the right comparison is, but I would think that with, we ought to make enough efforts as a school board, I don't, I'm not throwing this on the administration, we ought to make enough efforts as a school board and provide enough resources, or at least say we're failing if we don't do it, to reach the level of, say, Kentucky or North Carolina statewide. The, the other thing is, there are, there are some priorities that I pulled out in my proposed text that I actually put in the overall triennial plan as opposed to the work plan. Happy to discuss where the right place is for them, but the, you know, it seems to me that the things I was most concerned about, and I think you've, you pulled out several very important ones here, I was concerned about the, whether sufficient resources are being provided to professional development. And I know we've got challenges, but I think that's one of the big pieces we ought to measure, because we're going to try to do things in, you know, in a more scalable way with personalized learning and all of those sorts of things. I think the target ought to be that 80% of the teachers say that we provide sufficient resources. And if, you know, it's like, I mean, to me, it's sort of alike that, you know, the 3% to 5% goal for Alexandria's, or sorry, for comparison to Arlington's salary, we may not be able to do it one year, but let's set a stretch goal that we can make. The, I think the, oh, I think the goal 1.4, provide clear information for teachers on the amount of non-instructional time available, which is unencumbered, I, I just, I think that's the wrong priority. I don't think that we ought to sign that as a communications issue. I get that we can't give people more time, I think, based on my discussions with people, that people think their planning time is not unencumbered. It's not that they don't know how many hours they've got, they think they've got a lot of obligations that they ought not have. And you can say they don't understand that all these things are statewide, but, you know, it's, again, it's, we, we don't do that well compared to other Virginia jurisdictions or other states in this category. An appropriate amount of time is provided professional development. We were at 58.9%, Fairfax was at 80%, Alexandria at 69%, and then both North Carolina and Kentucky were over 80%. So I think communications is a part of that, but I think part of it is an examination of the other burdens that we're putting on educators to see if we can reduce those. And, you know, for the triennial plan at least, I can't tell you what the, what the best steps are to do that, I just think we ought to set a goal that, you know, something like 80% of our teachers think that they're, the amount of, in planning time they've got is adequate. And if, if we can't do that, then, you know, we got to look at pulling down more barriers. The last thing, which I don't know is in the work plan or not, but I'd like to see in the triennial plan, or if not in the triennial, in the work plan, is improving our score on one of the other things that came out of the survey, which was the percentage of teachers that think they are involved in educational decisions. So I suggested that we ought to set a goal of 85% of teachers report they are recognized as educational experts and called upon to make decisions about educational issues. I think that would be a great goal to have if we can do it. We're, again, below where we ought to be. My recollection, I didn't pull that one up, my recollection is that that's one that's a little skewed by the results in a particular location, but I think, I just, I really would like to see that we have the right goals and stretch goals and measurable goals, and particularly if we're going to use the TEL survey again. I know there are a lot of people who don't think that's a good idea. I kind of, I would like to do it for a second year, both for the cost reasons and because it'll let us measure our effectiveness. So it would be nice to try and set some concrete and stretch goals to shoot for, so that even if we don't make them, we could say, here's what we did, here's where we need to go, and that can help us inform, you know, we can see what we're able to do with the budget that we've got, and we can ask for a realigned budget the right way the next time to try to get there. So that's kind of my, my view on this set of professional development and teacher satisfaction goals.
I'm just, I'm looking, you were talking about the planning time, and I'm just wondering, I know with the state it says, you know, 250 minutes of planned time a week, and I'm wondering if it is communication, we're saying unencumbered planning time, but maybe we should, if it's 350 or 400, maybe we shouldn't call all of it planning. Maybe we should say you get 250 or 300 of planning, and this amount will be for professional development or collaborating, so maybe it's, instead of administrator saying, you have 400 minutes of planning or whatever it is, this is the planning, and this is the collaborative or professional development time. But we would have, I mean, that would be a discussion with the administrators and the teachers to, to put that.
I mean, just to respond, and I don't want to dominate the conversation, but, you know, I think we ought to, we ought to, our goal ought to not be we're going to communicate better. Our goal here ought to be, you know, X percentage of our teachers think they've got sufficient planning time, and if we think it's all communications issue, then we can solve that problem with communications. But the goal shouldn't be a, we're going to communicate more with our teachers, because if the goal is we're going to communicate with our teachers, we, you know, we send out a few more emails, and we've set, we've met the goal, and our numbers don't improve.
Well, and I don't think that's what I'm saying as far as communication, I'm saying, say, this is planning and this is professional development, whether it's, it's just stating what the two things are.
But, but, just, just a foundational question. Objectively, how many minutes of planning time do teachers in our division have with other divisions? As I recall from the budget presentation, they had more.
They do have more.
So there could be a communication with respect to the fact that people in adjacent jurisdictions are more content and yet have less time. So there, it's not necessarily a one-to-one correlation, so there could be a couple of variables here, and, and we don't know, and, you know, while I agree that having stretch goals are important, you know, Mao also tried to increase steel production, and those stretch goals didn't work out so well. So, you know, I, I would like to have things that work well, I think some of the things we need to understand is before we try to move the needle, what is holding us back? Because for all of our flaws, we do a pretty good job, I think. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, increasing the rate of agreement on professional development differentiation, you know, one of the things for me for professional development differentiation is, I think that's great, but I, I do think the professional development is one of those ones, whether it is the certification for, you know, national board certification or anything else, that is one of the first things to go when the budget is getting tight. And so, you know, one of the things we need to say is, if we're going to move that needle, then it is going to take money at a time when enrollment is going up by, what, 5%? Five and a half percent?
As of today, it was 6.6 to 6.7.
6.6 to 6.7, so, you know, I, I think professional development is absolutely key and absolutely important, and I would support that, but it means that we're going to have another fun springtime, so.
And can I just add to that, because Lisa and I talked about this, and we went through your, your sheet today with great detail, and one of the reasons we didn't put it in here is, I'm a firm believer that, and it, and it's just a different way to look at it, and I could look at it either way, you don't put something in the work plan that you know you can't accomplish. And right now, given everything I know about the school division as far as And right now, given everything I know about the school division as far as resources, and what I'm seeing with class sizes right now, the amount of teachers we're going to need to hire in the district next year, if class size is truly still the same priority it is, we're, we're not going to have additional funding to put towards professional development. I think we've done, and I give these two ladies lots of credit for really doing a good job on the budget that we have and bringing people in, but that's the reason we both discussed it for quite a while and stayed away from the resource one, because we knew we're not going to be able to do it. Now, we can always put it in the work plan, and just say how we're okay if we don't meet it, but I've just always felt like what's in the work plan I do take seriously, and I, I, I would like to not have things in the work plan that, that we know are going to be incredibly challenging for us to do, if almost if possible. And professional development is one of those. We just, we've got to make the budget that we have work really, really well for staff. And I think we've done a, a good job of that, but I just, I don't see us having resources for professional development. If we're going to keep the teacher pay, class size, and, because this is going to be a tough year.
To just respond, I, I agree with you. I, I think, I mean, but if there's one big lesson, I think, that comes out of the survey, you know, there's a lot of things that you can look at. The biggest one for me was around professional development. That was the one that most clearly called out, we need more here. And so, I don't think we have a choice but to put more resources into professional development, even if that means compromising a little bit on class sizes. Because I, it just, I, I think we can do a better job, you know, not necessarily of competing with Arlington, but with Kentucky and North Carolina. Now, for sure, they have a lot of, they don't have all the challenges that we've got in terms of teacher pay, but I, I think we ought to be able to get to a higher place. And so, maybe I, you know, yes, I'm importing some of my views about what we need to do in the budget in terms of the goals that we set. And I, I, I don't think we should set a goal that we can't make, but I think we should set goals that we can make if we work really hard and do things the right way.
Well, and I think one of the, one of the issues that your point touches on is, is where, where are we in this circle of budget outcomes, priorities, planning, around and around and around? You know, we, we have last year's down to fumes in the gas tank budget, and now we have a work plan where I think we have to align to some extent, you know, we, we aspire maybe next budget cycle to allocate more resources, but right now, we have the resources we have. Maybe we can move things around, maybe we can't. But I think one of the things we need to do is, you know, I, I suppose, i- in this cycle, this document to some extent is saying, do the best you can with what you have, but also, here's what we as a board want to commit ourselves to doing next budget cycle. And, you know, I, I, in my memory, every single budget cycle, everybody says, and Mr. Sharp, you can, you can let me know, because you go way farther back, but professional development has always been the redheaded step job, and, and it shouldn't be. We did a little better on board, national board certification for a couple of years, but again, that was one of the first things to go.
Right.
So, I think it is absolutely important, and, you know, I think we should try to do what we can do, and I think we should do resourcing that will generate some of those stretch things, because I think with resources, the differentiation would follow, so.
Can I just add to? I think professional development is one of those areas, it's hard to compare ourselves to other school divisions, and I will just say that it's kind of one of those areas, and Margot's a teacher, you can chime in, but the more you get, the more you want, and in some districts, in this area, northern, northern Virginia area, region four, they'll set professional development, but you don't have to go. And so, if I'm a teacher, I may really kind of like that, because you either go or you don't, but you also really struggle as a school division to move a school division forward when you're not having consistent training. So, I, I just share that, because I chair region four, so I, I know what we do, and we talk a lot about these different issues, and it, it's hard to compare. And we do, we do so much more with professional development than most of our surrounding school divisions.
Ms. Gill.
So, so my comment on 1.3 is, have we, have we asked staff why they said, why they said this? Why they said, why only 20, 34% think that professional development is differentiated to meet their individual needs, and why 29% think that they're valuing results communicated? Because maybe there are some, again, some low-hanging fruit that we can, we can go after that gets us further along than 40%. So, we say, I, you know, I talked to some teachers during the budget season, who said that the opening training that's done at the beginning of the school year is not useful to, say, preschool teachers or some of the matinee teachers. They can't find seminars to go to that apply to things, what they're doing in their classroom. Just anecdotal. So, maybe, you know, that's, that's a, maybe that's a quick way to get a bunch more teachers on board and say, listen, what, what can we do to change that program that we're already providing? And maybe, you know, providing on-demand opportunities is a way to get a lot more people along and say, okay, now I have more options. But I do think, you know, since there were no open comment fields, we don't have the input to say why, and what could, what could we do? What do teachers think that the board or the administration could do differently to get them further along? And as part of it may be communicating, listen, this is our budget, and this is what, this is what we can do within our budget this year to provide more differentiated services. And we're doing everything we can to get to what you need.
And I mean, we'll get the results back from the survey that Gina just did.
Yeah.
We did meet with our certs to talk about the survey. We shared the division survey with them, and asked them to go back and have conversations with their colleagues about the survey. And, you know, professional development was the one that we spent a lot of time on, budget was the other. And so, those are two things that as our curriculum instructional resource teachers, they like to focus on, and so, we're continuing to meet with them monthly to, to have those conversations. But we, professional development is, is a difficult one, because even though we may bring someone in for NYPD, we, I'd much rather go to California and be at a conference, because that's, that's just nice to do. And so, I think some of, that's what makes it a little bit difficult, because for years, we did send people to kind of singleton conferences, one or two people, but now we're trying to build capacity in the larger group of our teachers so that we all get the same message. So, we aren't doing a lot of the travel that we used to do, and I think that may, that may impact a little bit.
And I was just going to ask, is that potentially a part, plays some level of, of that, that dissatisfaction, because?
I can't say for sure.
Okay.
But I just know that in previous years, we did let people go to conferences, and the last two years, we've more, more brought people into the division to be with our, you know, our whole staff or groups of teachers.
I think that goes back to asking why. Because 34% is very low, and 29%, I mean, these, these are, to me, this is shockingly low. It's, it's too, it's way too low, and even 40% is way too low. So, we need to ask them why. Is it because we can't provide you the opportunity to travel to conferences? You know, that's just not something we're going to be able to do. You know, and, and just, just addressing it and saying, you know, I, I hear you on that, that is, that is really hard, and I, we wish we could do it, we wish we had the money to send you there, and we don't. So, what can we do within our budget to help you feel like you're supported? Instead of saying, you know, we think it's probably because of this, it's, you know, just, just ask, and maybe we can help them by just asking them.
Yeah, we can update this section, and, and really, we can make it 70 or 80%. I mean, it'd be either hit it or you don't.
I mean, if, you know, and, and maybe it can be based on, maybe 2017 is one, and 2018, this is a, you know, three-year work plan, you know, figure out what can we can do, what are our different levels, and we're going to talk to people, and we're going to do each time, try to get ourselves higher.
Yeah, see, that's what I wanted to get to in terms of the stretch goal. You do the stretch in your three-year, you don't do the stretch in one year. I mean, it's like when we were looking to increase the salary to get to within 3% to 5%, I mean, that was a four-year plan, because that was a big lift. Yeah, 34% is way too low. One question I have for Tony is, is, you know, why 40 and not some other number, but you can set a stretch goal to say, you know, we want to be at 65, 70, 75, but not by June 2017, and this is just a one-year work plan. So, I, I think you're, you're right in trying to do two completely different things in one document where only one thing can actually be done. But I am curious, how did you come up with these numbers as opposed to other?
I was made of that, yeah. I, seriously, I, whenever, I pulled the survey out, looked at the survey, kind of where we were, thought about what the principals talked about in the summer and what the challenges were, and this is one of those that in order to differentiate, like, we spend a lot of time talking about NYPD. You can't really differentiate necessarily. A lot of that NYPD work they're doing, they're working as a collaborative team, they're writing the planners together, and it's hard work. And they felt like part of the influence there, we went through PYP authorizations last year, which are really tough, because you have to go back and really look at everything again with a fresh set of eyes. They felt like that really impacted that. So, I think trying to get it with what we're working on right now to really differentiate, technology is easy, but the things that we're working on systemically are very difficult. And this may, it may shoot up, and you could, we can put 70 or 80 or in there, we don't hit the target, we don't hit the target, but it was just trying to be realistic about having a target. I thought, okay, this is going to be little bits, because we have a NYPD authorization again this year, and we also have our PYP follow-up from our reports last year. So, we've got to do some work that's not necessarily differentiated. So, that, that's really, I mean, I just felt like I was trying not, I was trying to set a realistic target, is what it, what it is. But like I say, if we want to, up the ante, that's not a big deal at all. And the next one is really the same way as well. And it's, it's trying to really look at how it's communicated to teachers and getting that follow-up. And again, I felt like, you know, when you're growing by 10 or 11%, that's actually pretty good. But it depends, if you look at Alexandria, the first year that, that they gave their survey, and then the next year, a lot of their components went up like 20%. I mean, I went in and looked at year, you know, year one and year two. Fairfax has been doing it so long that every, every time you give it statistically, they say it goes up, because you focus on different things. And so, Fairfax is kind of an outlier in that so many of their staff have been doing it for a long time. Alexandria was a good one to look at, because you can actually see the two-year trend. But again, I mean, I was trying to have a realistic target, but certainly, if we would rather, a goal on any survey, educational survey, is really your goal is to be 80%. I mean, that's where you want to be.
Except graduation rates.
Well, so if you can hit 80% on any of those targets, and anything that's above 80 is like, that's awesome. But if we're, if we want to put 80% in here, and then move this date to be 2019, maybe it happens in a year, or maybe it happens in three years or two years.
Mr. Reiner, you have a question?
Oh, just a couple of things. One, the, the 80% and 85% in one case figures that I threw in, were in the triennial plan, and I don't know that I thought how many years it would take to get there, but it doesn't strike me as unreasonable that that's a three-year target as opposed to a one-year target. I, I don't know any way to set them other than to look at comparative jurisdictions, as Dr. Jones, you say you were doing. In general, I think it depends on the item, but your generalization about 80% is outright for at least a lot of the professional development ones. Some are a little higher, some are a little bit lower. The ones that I looked at were the last two Fairfax County ones, Alexandria, and the two states I mentioned, because they were the two most recent statewide results that I could get from publicly available data. If it's at all helpful to you, and you may have crunched your own numbers, I'm happy to give you the spreadsheet that I put together that, basically, I, I spent a little bit of time mapping, since the questions changed over time, to the current set, and it sort of breaks it down by all of those jurisdictions and by the four city jurisdictions. So, I don't, I don't want to give you something you've already got, but if it's useful in terms of target setting, I'm happy to send this to you.
Sure. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Lawrence.
Just one thing that, that you had said, Phil, you talked about, you would go more toward professional development, which we cut after the budget got cut last year, right? In our final budget?
Uh-huh, yeah.
You said you would favor that versus class size, and I think if you put it in that sort of frame, I mean, that's something that hasn't been raised, one versus the other. So, I just want to make sure that-
Well, let me just, so, it, we're in a position where we're not able, we're picking generally in budget cycles now between bad alternatives. And, you know, look, I, I've, I've always been a huge proponent of small class sizes. I want to keep our class sizes as small as possible. But I also believe you've got to go where the data takes you. And, you know, I spent a lot of time looking at the survey results, and one of the things that they convinced me of is that we have to do a lot of work around professional development. And I don't know where that means, but if at the end of the day, it comes down to another teacher or $106,000 for professional development, I would weigh that differently now than I did last year, because I've got more data now. And so, there, there's no absolute rule, it's just, it, my, my view of what I think our responsibilities are. And so, I, I, I offer that up for consideration by the public and you guys, as, as the board wants to. But we've got to, I think we've got to put more resources in professional development, because, you know, as Erin said, the numbers we've got right now are not acceptable in a bunch of different categories. And there are a whole bunch of reasons for that. I've got no doubt at all that part of it is, we went from a place where we were, you know, the school system's got everything they needed to a place where we don't, and professional development probably got cut a lot. And so, there's a differential expectation component of a low survey result. But, you know, that's got to be a part of communications, but I think there's also going to need to be some additional dollars that go into it, because they're just not acceptable. And, you know, if, whatever that means, we've, we've got to get those up.
Well, but, but I think to Mr. Lawrence's point, you know, I've received emails from people saying in all caps, don't ask our parent, our teachers whether they want pay increases or small class sizes, but now we're, we are going to have to ask them, what, what Sophie's Choice do you want? I mean, is it a question of those three, and you get two, or maybe you only get one? Because, you know, face it, we're in an environment where the projections are best-case revenue bump of two-ish percent, according to the latest estimates from the CFO. We're seeing enrollment 6 and 1/2%, which is going to cascade into headcount increases. Something has to give. Now, maybe something will give in, in that direction, but we, it may be that what they're saying is, all things being equal, we'd like more professional development, but they may not be saying, may we please have more professional development regardless of what consequences may ensue? So, I, you know, we've got, this is another variable, and I don't know the answer, and I, you know, there may be mixed opinions, I, I have no idea, but.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I agree with you, but I, you know, I wouldn't ask teachers to make that decision. That's not, that's our decision to make, informed by some opinions that they've got, but I don't know that if I were a teacher, I could legitimately answer a question, would you rather have an extra kid in your class or get more professional development? I think we have to hear what-
I know if I were a teacher, I'd want to be asked that question, though, before somebody makes that decision for me.
Yeah, I would, I would totally want to be asked that.
Yeah, I mean, that, to a certain extent, that's more the point I was getting to, when, if, if somebody on the board says something like you said, obviously, class size is, you know, a factor in the budget, and that, you know, may have to go at some point, but if somebody says, you know, I'd support professional development even at the expense of bigger classes, and nobody else on the board says anything, to me, that would easily be seen by the public and the teachers as, oh, they've pretty much made a decision, and I could see the teachers thinking, and we just got thrown under the bus for increasing class size. So, that was, you guys are sort of thinking it way past me. I just wanted to make it clear that we hadn't made any decisions on that, because I think that would just look bad and be wrong.
Could I, just one second, Ms. Rankuma. It, it now is 8:51, and we are on page three of a-
700.
-a-page document. I'm happy to keep going, as are you probably, but I just want to check in and suggest that maybe we should slog through this a little bit more. Ms. Rankuma.
You put it more eloquently than I did, because I was going to say, there's 65 of these, and we spent an hour on five. I don't know that we want to be here this long, so, this is a budget question, as far as I'm concerned, could we?
Well, but they, I mean, I, but I do think these all things, these all interlock, and we need to be very mindful of that, so.
No, I know, but the point I'm making is, to the point you made, we still have.
Yeah, okay.
At, at the end of the day, we have a limited amount of funds, and everyone's in agreement that we want our teachers involved in how the funds are spent. After all, they're the ones in the trenches. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them what their priorities are, because, and then, we have, we have to go from somewhere, we can't just pull something out of our, you know, out of the top of our heads. And I also want to go back to it, Ms. Gill said earlier, about the reasons why, you know, teachers are dissatisfied. It might be something as simple as they don't get to travel to California anymore, and if that's the case, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, again, I'm speculating, but I'd love to know why that rate is so low. It could be something that is not, like, we're sitting here agonizing over these results, but we don't know what's supporting those results. I'd like to see reasons. I don't know if that's possible to get, but I'd like to see those reasons.
Okay, so, if I might suggest that-
And I'd like to move on.
Well, I, I don't know, on the one hand, you can say Dr. Jones should, should go through this whole thing, but that means she's reading to us that which we, we can all read ourselves. So, perhaps we can just briskly go through here, raise issues, and- So perhaps we can just briskly go through here, raise issues, and let's just try to, to move at a, at a good clip because right now we're in slog mode, so.
And since it's draft one, why don't I just hit the overall categories, what some of the highlights are, and then if you, everybody can do their homework between this week and next week. And then, you know, that will provide, if you get comments to me, I can actually look at what your thoughts are and then try to update the draft. The priority 2.1 is the Division Technology Advisory Committee. Again, this will be the year, and I've tried to clearly define that the goal is to look at device structure and the academic needs of the buildings. That is what the purpose is. It is not to rewrite a huge 400-page document that we just submitted to the state again last year, just with any updates. Because we do have that plan in place, and again, we wouldn't even have the staff to do that if we wanted to do it. And this is a big ask here. Also looking at just some of the data that we'll be pulling, and you'll see the three-year refresh, looking at the system-wide technology staffing. We did look at that in the budget this year. And again, that kind of goes along with that support discussion. We're going to have to be looking at not just teacher class size, but at what point are we looking at some of these other areas that need some help? Priority 2.2 is really improving those performance for our special populations. A lot of this doesn't change, and that's because, like on the first one, when it says maintain student growth, that annual measurable, measurable objective is set by the state. So we don't pull our own data and decide, do we need it or do we not? That's defined for us. Also, growth on the WEDA. We have an expectation. That's the assessment we must give to our students. It measures their reading, writing, speaking, and listening, so that's the measurement that we use. Again, we don't need to put other things in here. Again, tracking and reporting the four-year graduation rate, that's been, that's a big deal for us. And we're, we're known in Virginia now for having 100 percent of our kids graduate. And, and I don't, I'm not sure the school board even realizes how much effort goes in to make that happen. Literally, the individual tutors and just hours and hours and hours to help some of our students, and that's a tough thing to do. And it needs to stay in here because that is, we're committed to it, and it takes a lot of time and effort.
And resources.
And resources. One of the newer things in here, and it's really just more clearly defined, is the report on student credentialing, especially in regards to Arlington Career Center and other opportunities made available. That's a big push at the state level. The state level is really looking at right now, and that's one of the things, you had the portrait of the graduate, that's a state-level thing right now, and they're going to push out to us, kind of what is the expectation for where we want students to be. And so once that comes out, this fits right into it. And we've been working on it over the last, really, two years, and our Arlington Career Center has gone way up as well. On priority 2.3, extending.
Actually, Tony, sorry. And I don't want to increase the slog, but on 2.2, you've got one that just says, "Examine special education." Is there something missing there?
Oh, you know what? There is. I'll have to go back. Yeah, I'll go back. Good catch. Thank you. I'll have to come back and get that one. Thank you.
That must be what I interrupted you.
Yeah, I don't know. 2.3 was that extending the class time and offering more flexible formats. This has been critical to us. And again, it's taken a tremendous amount of effort. And, you know, to have 300 and, I think it was 20, 340 students engaged this summer at our high school is unheard of. It really is setting pace in the country, that our students are choosing in high school to, to be in school year-round and take a, a summer course. We also, the dual enrollment, you'll see that in here again. That's another number we're really proud of in the last four years. You know, we've gone from six students and seven students trying to make one class to over 200 students this year in dual enrollment on our high school campus. So we're excited about that. STEAM is on here again. We still have, we're in our third year to implement that, and that's been a big ask. Small class sizes, we didn't make any adjustments, but again, this will be a big policy, you know, discussion for the board later on as we get into budget, trying to maintain class sizes. Then, modern and secure schools. This really is about completing the renovation expansion of the elementary facility. The board debated the date last year a lot. Right now, it's at January of 2018, if we got a yes. And then also to complete the RFP process formation to hit that November 2017 referendum date. So you'll see those listed below. I will say, the scheduled timeline produced by February, trying to get an RFP out in December of, actually, that should be '16, because that was this December, will be a tough ask. But we can certainly adjust those dates, but that's, again, trying to hit that target because we are at capacity, which I know the board knows that. We are out of space at MEH and George Mason. Again, these, on page six, those are some standard things. Mount Daniel construction completion, the Weld and Cooper numbers, making sure that those get done, updating our housing and demographic information. And that seems like just a little bitty task, but it's not. And it's really important for us as we start, and when we're trying to project students and working closely with general government on, on some of the future development, that's, they really rely on us for that. And it takes quite a bit of time because we don't have a statistician. Priority 4.1 is the risk mitigation plan and is informed by the audit. Now, this is one, I know Mr. Reiner had added one or two more sentences on his, but if the school board is going to want us to go beyond what's in the audit, and this is not for an answer, just food for thought, then you're also going to have to think budgetarily, what is it that you want us to contract to get more work done? Because that's where we left it after the audit, so, and we don't really have the funding built in to do it. On readiness for learning, not, there's really not a lot new here, but again, this is kind of an area that we're very proud of, and we try to keep up with because we think it does inform that we're taking care of all children. And those are how many of those meals we're serving on the weekends, how many of our families are in crisis or in need, where they need those boxed lunches or weekend meals. And also increasing the technology support, pre-K through eight. We've done a great job, we, we have at high school, once we rolled out the first year. Last year was the first year we really focused on preschool through eighth grade. And we had, you know, we only have, we usually have about 8 percent of our families that are on, that qualify for free and reduced meals, which is usually a good indicator of the percentage of families that struggle, to fund things that most of our families would have. And we did have, for the first time really last year, elementary parents reaching out and feeling like they needed help just having a computer. They didn't have any access for their children. And hotspots, and they felt like their children were disadvantaged. So we were able to work with the foundation and other means to, to get us through that. Community engagement, there are quite a few things under priority 6.0. And this is trying to, again, some of the things that we did last year that we think did help, but also hosting the school tours, getting, you know, the community out in our schools. Interesting enough, when we did those this year, nobody came, very, very few people. The year before, we had a pretty good turnout, and, and people would come and kind of really see instructional and what we're doing. So we'll see how those go this year. Also doing, hosting George Mason tours to share the condition of the site and the facility, and making specific invitations to broader community who want to come see inside. City Council, Planning Commission, EDA, and school board as well, so that people can see, well, really, how old are the boilers, you know? What are some of the issues, you know, with the building as you walk around? Still holding another large-scale visioning event this year, before December, again, on the GM project, trying to get people engaged because every time we do an event, people are there that don't know what we've done for the last two years. So trying to kind of keep people up to speed and know all the work the board has done. We need to have another really big event. Also, on 6.1, community engagement in a positive and productive way. That's looking at input forums, doing some smaller, again, with the PTA in November, getting feedback from them on budget input. And you'll notice that November date, it's early, trying to get lots of feedback. The three, holding some listening tours out in the community at different spots off-site, seeing if we can gain any sort of traction. Because generally, people don't come to these things, but it's worth, worth a try, again. And then the listening tour at each school site, a little bit different than the board just going out. It's actually getting out early, again, making sure before December comes and the budget's actually put together, just being available in the teacher's lounge, like we did on the principal's hiring. Lisa and I went out, hung out in the lounge. Anyone that wanted to stop by could, and we got great feedback. So I think maybe on the budget, that would be a good approach this year. And on 6.2 is really looking at the budget calendar, which we've already started trying to tweak that. Again, starting earlier and also making sure that we're engaged with city council on the budget and finance. That's been new and much more informative. And then on the responsible fiscal management on the back, this is again, just looking at our rolling through year and trying to set the priorities in the staff work plan. And I, I added this one in here. This really needs to be done before August 1st. You know, doing this the first day of school is not ideal because we're supposed to be starting the work of the year. And even August 1st, it'd be great to have it in July, but it may be too aggressive. But definitely trying to get this work done before August so that everyone is ready to go when school starts. And part of that's not anybody's fault. We've just been so busy just to get through everything. The automation upgrades, we hopefully by November will fully implement our time card system, purchase order system, any of the last little bits we've been piloting, our time card system. And then again, it's in here to review central office staffing in preparation for the FY18 budget, and then just collaborating more on the budget. And one of the things that we've talked about that is new in here is to define, is to discuss and refine the strategy for actually crafting the budget for the superintendent in regards to the general government projected revenue and the budget approach. And we've talked a lot about that. The guidance I get every year is you go and you put a budget together, and it's supposed to be what we truly believe we need for the school division. Well, I can tell you, if we, if we do that this year, we're going to be asking for a 10 percent budget. It's where it started last year, and that was what we needed. I think we're probably going to get a number this year that's going to be a 2 percent. So do you want the superintendent to really ask for what we need to run our school system? Or do we want to say, here's the 2 percent, this is what, it will do the VRS increase, we could hire one or two teachers, we may or may not be able to do a step, you know, for staff? That's what, that's the Arlington approach. And then they say, and here's the gap, truly, this is what we need if we want to be able to do a step and all of those things. So they take the gap approach, and I think it's one reason they don't have as many battles because it gets out in the community, you know, early, November, December, that, hey, what they're saying is 2 percent. We're either all going to live with it, and this is what it means to live within our means, or we're going to either, you know, change policy or class size policy or something like that in order to, you know, be able to make that budget work more effectively. So I put that in here because I think it's really important for the school board to have that discussion.
The 2 percent without the tax increase?
Yeah. And again, that's, you know, we're hoping that, you know, you've also got a, a new development that was supposed to be opening with a grocery store. And, you know, and although that, that's, I mean, if you look back over the last two years, we've had a lot of discussion, and we're going to get children from that development, and now where's the revenue on the bottom? It's not going to be there. So we'll see how fast it comes in. One thing that makes me nervous about that development is there's no grocery store. They're competing with Pearson Square, they're competing with West and Rod. So is the rent going to be cheaper, actually? Are they going to lower the rent because you don't have that amenity on the bottom? So could we see an influx of students? I don't know. West and Rod is, up today, was at 17 students. So the low projection is 32, and a lot of times that takes you two or three years. We're there today, so.
Last week, it was 13? So it's gone up by four in a week.
Right. And 10 of those, because the other thing we watch is the migration in the city, and 10 of those are brand-new to the school system. Seven have moved from other places, but usually that gets backfilled by another family. Well, at least that's the last two years. We haven't seen other, other developments, so we go down. But we're watching all of that. So that was the stats I could do that. Everybody will study, study, and then let me know.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, any comments or questions? You just can't not defer. All right. Now we come to our closed meeting. Somebody want to move us into closed?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, EPED assignments, and advisory committee appointments and resignations.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rankuma. Just call the role, Mr. Kimball.
Yes, Mr. Rankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Somebody want to certify the closed meeting?
Are those the new numbers?
They are, actually. I just didn't put them on board. Don't just spin.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2 dot 2 dash 3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Do I have a?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Would you call the role, please, Mr. Kimball?
May I?
Oh, I'm sorry. The role of Mr. Kimball is played by Mr. Horn.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we come to the consent agenda. I would seek unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, that's approved. Now we come to item 7 dot 01, the bus camera update.
And if you remember, I think the school board asked me questions, was it last week? And I couldn't answer them because I didn't have the legal side. So Mr. Horn is going to actually give you the reasoning why we're not running the cameras right now.
And I'll try to do this as quickly as we can without getting into the mundane aspects of it. We, as you know, legislation was passed last year, which seemed to get everyone's enthusiasm up for the, for the start of this. And then as additional jurisdictions looked at implementing it, they ran into two issues, and one involved access to DMV records by third-party vendors. You may have heard about that. That is not the case for us, and we've been assured by our police department and the city attorney that the arrangement that we have with our vendor doesn't provide them the access that is prohibited by the Code of Virginia. So that is not an issue for us. And as more people understand the mechanics of, of the plans, it will be not a big issue for others either. The issue that is keeping the systems from running right now and issuing citations is that in Virginia, in order for a fine to be prepaid, there is a uniformity across the Commonwealth for the fine amount. And this is one of those violations that requires the uniformity, and it needs to be And this is one of those violations that requires the uniformity and it needs to be on the Virginia Supreme Court's uniform fine list. And although the legislation was passed in, in the spring, the Virginia Supreme Court has not added this violation to the uniform fine list. Yet, they meet in September, we anticipate. If the, the things fall the way they're supposed to fall, that, that it could be on the uniform fine list, meet Rule 3C of the Virginia Supreme Court by two weeks from now. And we would be ready to run the very next day because the systems are obviously there and in place. So we're hopeful that by the end of the month, we will be able to operate the system as we did several years ago.
What's the fine amount?
It's $250.
Can't ask any buses, anybody.
Seriously?
Chair.
Sir. Just two quick comments. My first is, are you kidding me?
I know.
It's too ridiculous to be wrong. And the second is, is there a possibility to, is, does it have to be on the uniform fines list to assess the fine and provide the ticket? Or does it have to be on the uniforms fines list to record the violation and later process the ticket? With the sole point being, can we turn the cameras on now, record violations and send the fines out when the, when the violation is put on the Virginia Supreme Court's uniform fines list?
Yeah, so the answer to that would be no, there's a, there's a period of time from the, from the recording of the violation to the issuing of the citation and we would not, because it's an unknown as to how long it will occur. The question about whether or not the cameras can run and the system can start is sort of a resource question and it's twofold. The vendor, of course, would need to have the full staffing of the operation with the potential of receiving no income, no, no portions of those citations. But also probably more importantly, from the general government side, we would also have to commit significant resources from the police department to operate a system that may or may not be able to actually issue citations in, in a short window, so.
Is there any advocacy, advocacy group pushing for this to be done sooner rather than later?
I would say there is substantial advocacy to get this done in the most efficient possible, as there was at the General Assembly in the winter. I mean, this is one of those bills that was, was put on and had very little resistance to, to passing, so.
Right, any other questions?
Yes.
Sir.
Is there any concern that because it wasn't on this list, which I'm not even going to try to pronounce, any of our old tickets are in jeopardy and we could have a budgetary problem or we had to refund anything?
Yeah, so that was sort of broached by the city attorney under the last, when the Attorney General's opinion came out that the previous legislation was deficient, the city attorney looked at the same issue and at that time declared that we were not in jeopardy of, of a massive budget impact by having to refund those things. You probably know from, if you read newspapers from around the state, some jurisdictions voluntarily return citations paid. It was not the decision of our general government to do that.
Okay, and, and this would fall under the same opinion, so we're good. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Student enrollment update and class size.
Well, I didn't actually put it on board, Doc, just because that makes me nervous this time of the year because we can't go up and down little bits. But what we are seeing is, as of today, we were 2,701. So that's, that's a big number for us. We're, we've been sitting between 6.6 and 6.7 growth. It's the largest growth that we have seen since I've been here and I don't know for how long before that, but it's big for us. And right now, we're plus 167 students. So if you're getting emails about buses, you know, we did message everybody today. It is a challenge not only to have that, that number and volume of new students. We had to add a route for elementary, middle and also high school, so additional route bus. And then on top of that, we have such a high volume of students and I need, I'll get the exact number for you, but it's like 600 new students because of the kids that move out that are State Department and new families that move in. So you're adding additional new, but then you also have students who are new to our system that are, just a lot, a lot of new addresses that you're putting through the system. So 2,701 and just to give you the numbers, Mount Daniels, 388. TJ is 821. MEH is right at 600 as of today. George Mason is 817. So I think again, it does, you know, the school board has been thoughtful for many years about enrollment growth and we contracted stuff with Weldon Cooper. There are going to be some unknown factors like the development that is taking place that we just don't know what we don't know and we're going to keep watching the new developments, but that's where we are. Class size spikes, just so you'll know, and, and we said this when we went into the budget, that we knew we were going to have class sizes that were not where we'd like them to be. Kindergarten is 24, so they're two over our class size policy. First grade is 21, 22, our policy is 22. And as a reminder, we did have, we had nine sections on kindergarten, eight on first. We moved the ninth section from kindergarten to first and just as a reminder, I mentioned that I think a week or two ago. And so kindergarten has a full-time assistant, first grade only has half. So we had to choose which one of those was going to be larger. And then the other thing that went into it for us, and Erin and I talked about this, if we get a yes on construction, it's that side of the building where first grade is that's also outside. So we felt like they needed to have the lower number. We did add a teacher in preschool. Preschool is at 75 students. That, that's a big number. And again, I talked last week about some significant needs as well. Pardon? Thackeray, what did I say? I'm sorry.
You said preschool.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, Thackeray's at 75, which is, it is a big number. Then we also have second grade that is at 22 and 23, so they're just over policy as well. Still, it's still manageable size, we're, but we are over policy. And what it tells you when every grade is spiking, this is what happened to us, like, you know, when we had to fix this issue. And we hired 14 teachers one year and we needed about a 14% budget to fix it. So I just called that out because we said it was going to happen and it is. Third grade is at 22, which is within, well, third grade is 22, 23. So they are within policy, fourth grade's within policy. Fifth grade is between 24 and 25. That's where one of our teachers was added and we're still at 24 and 25. And that, that class now is up to 221 students. We do have spikes in high school, again, not as many at middle school, but in high school just by enrollment and where this, where those classes have fallen, we will have some sections with 30, which we don't like, but we're trying to really monitor the course load to make sure that the teacher doesn't hit that 120 or go over 120. We will have a few as of today that are going to be over 120.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah. So, and I'll continue to update you over the next coming weeks. And the scary thing is, this is where we start, we get our official count, you know, in October, but usually we'll go up. We continue to climb, so we're just going to have to watch it and see. But they're big numbers for us. 6.6 and 6.7 is big. And again, those two teacher positions we had went to fifth and thank goodness we put it there because now they're, they're 24 and 25. And then preschool was where the other one went. So that's where we are as of today. I'm sorry to be so depressing, but.
Do we have any idea about others? I mean, are we unique or is it just Northern Virginia exploding again?
Um, you know, our growth rate has been higher than those, those other divisions around us over the last couple of years, other than, I think it was Arlington-Hunter last year that may have been about the same, we were slightly higher, but we're, I mean, we are definitely a place people want to come for the schools, so.
Just have a quick question about Thackeray that people have asked. Yeah, I know our mandate is we need to educate students who have needs. So at what point, at what point do our classes get so big that we, we move away from our integrated model that we wanted to have there?
Right.
You know, where it goes back to being 80% students who have needs and 20% to?
Right. Right now, we're, the, the six sections that we have, we try not to go over 12. Well, you couldn't have 12 special needs students anyway.
Right, right.
So you have your special needs population and then you can't have those other students that, some of them are, are still economically disadvantaged, they could be ESOL, but they don't have like health-related issues. So that's where we try to real, and what's the age? If they're two and three years old, they're very different than, you know, a, a older three-year-old. So, yeah, we've had to really watch our two-year-olds because again, some of the health-related issues are, are, it's really like you need a full-time nurse, quite frankly. I mean, really, the way that it's become has been, it's, it's getting really challenging. What we ask paraprofessionals to do and our teachers, it's, it's a little scary actually. Just simply some of the significant needs that we have. So right now, we can go with the 12, but if, we have one more classroom, we can have seven sections and then preschool is full. And you really can't change a whole lot from what we have now. It would, there would be no advantage because you can't have 12 special needs children in there. So we'll be looking at another facility.
Oh, I would say, so we would have to, we would have to grow to accommodate that?
That.
Right, that populate, like the people, the students who need?
Right.
Who need that.
Right. It's all dependent on our children who have special needs. And so let's say, and you don't ever know, we, we enroll special needs all year long because of child find, they go out and have to make sure. So if we happen to get another five or six little kiddos and then we need a seventh section, it could happen in the middle of the year. But it's definitely a faster rate. We knew preschool, there were lots of preschool kids out in the community, but this is definitely more than what we anticipated. But again, it's just, it's on, the great thing is it's everywhere. You know, and honestly, that doesn't, I know it sounds funny, but it's good that it's spread out pre-K-12 because had we just got absolutely slammed in elementary and you had 170 kids at TJ, we would have been in kind of crisis. So we're lucky this year it is spread out because it isn't always like that.
But, but it also means that if 12 kids, children came, one in each grade level, you could tip to the point where a very, this is extreme, but you'd need 12 new classroom teachers or something like that. You know, we're, we're at that point where?
Oh, you're, next year.
Each marginal child could create a teacher.
Highly likely unless something really strange happens, highly likely next year you're, we're going to be back in that situation where we need quite a few teachers or it's going to mean change to class size policy, which, you know, is always on the table. But when you look at secondary right now, you know, we used to talk about like, oh, that's a class of 200, that's really huge. Well, when you look at sixth through 12th, they are all over 200 except for sixth grade and they're at 177, they're just a smaller class. And then at elementary, I mean, you've got, you know, it's 220, 198, 228. You've got a 178, which is that tiny class that year we had the blip. They, they're growing, but they haven't gotten huge. 195, 193. So those will be 200s by next year or by the next two or three months. So we're a 200 kind of grade level cohort right now. Lots of kiddos.
Okay, and in terms of our tracking of housing stock and, but not in our models for planned developments coming online and things like that?
Uh-huh.
What is the future, does this, does this change how the longer-term models are going? In other words, is this, do you redo all the models with this number and everything then bumps up substantially or what is, what are its longer-term implications?
Well, I think when we do our enrollment projections on that October 1st, it's also the day we do the housing so that they're always consistent. That is our official number because otherwise you'd go crazy with the number of apartments that move in and move out. So we're going to try to really look at, are we seeing, you know, are we seeing changes in the housing market? Is it again, just a ton of single-family homes? That could very well be the case. We have a lot of new single-family homes. And when you see preschool getting hit, these little kiddos may have been there last year, they just weren't in school, they weren't school age. So we've got to see where they're all coming from. And then we'll, of course, contract with Weldon Cooper and Weldon Cooper may do another level set when they look at Northern Virginia again. And, and they do tweak a little bit each year, but the cohorts of children are pretty consistent. It's usually kindergarten, that is the challenge to know what's coming in. And then on the developments, are we projecting, is the projection model working for Broad Street and is it working for the other new development that will open? And as we'll, we'll be able to watch that this year and you'll have a pretty good idea if it's working or not. And right now, like I say, we're halfway for the low projection. There's, we always do a low, a mid and a high. Well, we used to, we actually really do a low and kind of a high now with the city, just two. And the low is 32 students out of that new development, so, you know, it's a little scary that you're already at 17 and it's just opened because it's only at 60% capacity is what they said this last week. And then, of course, over time, once families move in, they may very well stay there. And I think another impact is the housing market in Falls Church is a challenge. I mean, a lot of the homes that are on the market are over a million dollars. So if you're a family that's looking for that median range, the, you know, 700,000, there's not a lot there. So the apartments are, you know, an opportunity to get your child in school and be able to, you know, start school and be happy and have a swimming pool and parks and great things, so.
Which raises another issue. I was at a party over the weekend and parents said, we love everything about the schools, there's just one thing that, that we're really concerned about and that is all the people in Sleepy Hollow who are sending their kids here and getting, getting apartments and basically having sham transactions. So we've been over this?
Can I address that?
Yes, but it, it is, it is, it continues to be a, a live issue in the minds of people and I don't know if, if this in fact materializes. Can we and do we recover tuition from those families and?
We are pretty vigilant to try to chase them up. And in the last two years, I would say we've done a better job than we ever have before. At high school, they don't get their schedules.
Right.
And, and as of, over the weekend, and I've kind of upped the ante on the principals to, to say, if you think these children are here, they need to have their residency, it needs to be completed, otherwise they should not be going, they shouldn't be on a class list. Because it, it was, we, we did have some of that and we've really tried to do door knock checks, which Hunter usually does those for us. And making, making sure that they have, you know, the correct paperwork. And, you know, Mason, as of, as of Friday, had 50 students, which is a lot, that hadn't completed their paperwork. They worked all through the break, calling people, making sure that they were okay to start school and by this morning they were down to three. Holding people accountable that you, you just, you can't be in class if you haven't done what you need to do. And all of our buildings did a fantastic job. Mount Daniel did the same thing. Okay, we have X amount of kindergartners that have gone online to register, but we really don't have what we need. They called all the families and said, if you don't have it, you know, you're not going to be able to start school. And that, that does it. I will say, the first year we did it, we had some irate people and so I made a point this morning to stop in and check on the high school registrar to make sure that wasn't happening again. And, and the great thing was, I think people have gotten the message that they have to have the right paperwork.
So you're saying that people are, House County renting something in the city to have an address and then kids come to the city school, but they're really not?
Well, that's, that's what, that's the word and people say, and I know these people, but I won't tell you who they are.
Well, and you know what? And then the thing is shame on them. Because honestly, if you have this information, you have the concern and you bring it up and you're not willing to at least give us the information, we follow up. Every time there's a concern, we follow up on it.
No, I said, you know, just go across the street to my house, put it in the mailbox, nobody will be the wiser, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, exactly.
The other thing we started doing last year was doing the mid-year check in January. So the big thing is when leases expire, because they expire every month all year long. So it, we don't have, again, a staff that does this. So for a registrar to have 815 kids in high school and try to go in and look at everybody's leases who are expiring and when they're expiring, they're trying to run the office with kids who are throwing up and all of the kinds of stuff. And it's hard, but they've done a really good job of making sure that they check them, they've got a list for, to start school, you have to be, and then check them again in January if those leases are expiring. And, and it's not easy for them, it's very difficult, but they're, they've done a great job with it.
Well, and not to be Debbie Downer, but these people at this party also said, and it extends to people who own houses, they may not live in the house, but they say, I own the house, I should be able to send my children here.
And, and we, yeah. And we do battle with those and usually they'll go to Mr. Horn if we need a legal, you know. But when they come back, we have people that do feel like if they own their home here, even if it's rented to another family, they should be able to send their kids and we say no. Well, I mean, we follow exactly what we're supposed to do.
Well, it's in the Code of Virginia 2021-3, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're pretty vigilant about, but I will tell you, do people try to sneak in? Absolutely. We've had some of the strangest ones this year where, and a lot of times, you know, you have to be really careful in your questioning because they also may be homeless. And we do have homeless families in Falls Church. And so you have to be, the, the office staff have to be very careful about how they question people because they may be living in a hotel and they may not have, you know, all of the stuff they need to, that a normal family would be able to bring. So we have to, it's, it's very careful. And then we'll have sometimes two families that are living together because they don't have the income in Northern Virginia, you know, to have a single-family home, so.
And along, along the same lines with the homeless issue, being very careful about broaching that subject because you also don't want to have somebody who's, who's clearly committing fraud and then give them an out in terms of claiming homelessness.
You can see Hunter's passionate about this too. That's why we send him to knock on doors.
We've seen it all.
I remember I was at TJ years ago and you were doing that.
Well, and honestly.
You were telling you to check on people.
And, and usually once people realize that, okay, you understand you're breaking the law, I mean, most people then don't enroll. I mean, they don't go that next step. But we have had to ask families to leave and we will ask them. And it is, I'll tell you, that's probably the, I always say, snow calls are the worst thing. That's the worst part of my job is having to sit down and tell a family that, you know, "I'm sorry, but you are not living here legally." And they have been dishonest of their children in, in school because it's devastating on the kids to have to pack up and move.
Anything else on that, Mr. Riedinger?
Very quick question. Dutchens, when will the, the Kiran Sharp chart be completed showing or dest or origin?
The housing.
Yeah.
That's when I was saying that I usually do that on that October 1st when our official count is. And that way, the number of students living in the school division matches the, the housing.
Okay. The next item is the GM MEH project, I, and Mount Daniel as well. I, I had been on the phone with Dr. Jones the other day saying, you know, "We gotta get cranking on George Mason, MEH, what's going on?" And she said, "Let's have a conversation here and she'll, she'll explain where everything is." So, Dr. Jones?
I'll start with Mount Daniel, just as an update. I don't think it's anything new for the board, but again, we've got to get through this week and then next week, we're back in front of the Planning Commission. Hopefully, we'll get a yes. And then that next day, we'll be working with the team to get us in gear. I will say, you know, kudos to Aaron and Jeremy and Sevy, who were tremendous on the traffic mitigation for us. And we've really tried to put in even some newer solutions to get through this kind of intermittent time. And there was not one car that belonged to our parents or, or us on Oak Street. The only cars that were there were either people that lived there or there was a house under construction. And, and we've worked with them to say, "Can you please only park on one side of the street?" And, and they forgot this morning, Sevy was there first thing in the morning, they went out and moved their trucks. But just have done a great job. We were also, want to thank, you know, the American Legion. Ken Feltman, Harry Shovlin worked through them to be able to use their parking lot this week just because this is the week kindergarten parents do all of their parent conferences. And so, we wanted to clear out another 15 spots out of the parking lot. And we have shut, we're shuttling, they're parking in American Legion, we're taking them by shuttle up to the school and then picking them up at the end of the day. And so, we're doing that all this week while those parent conferences are going on. But again, it's just taken a huge team effort to mitigate traffic. We do have a little bit of parking on the grass area. If you haven't been up there, it looks really different. But again, that was just trying to have a solution to make sure that we're being very cognizant of traffic. So, they've done a great job. So, hopefully, we'll see where we are next week on there, on Mount Daniel. On George Mason MEH, one of the things, Justin said, "What are we doing? We're just sitting still." Remember on our calendar, we have those joint meetings coming up. And one of the things we're working with right now is trying to get the contract solidified with Links to actually be the consultant for us. We were supposed to have a meeting on Friday, the contract wasn't quite ready. We will meet this week. And I had an update on that this afternoon. And that really is to help the school board and general government start to make those decisions and, and having a consultant that's going to help us along the way. Once we have the contract in place, we've done the purchase order, we're just waiting on the last review, then I will send that out to you so you'll kind of know what's coming up. And one of the first things they'll, they'll be doing is actually kind of that broad calling, like they said, would be a proposal, calling the school board, city council, members of the community to get feedback on what are the questions we have and what are those pressing questions? Trying to think if there's anything else really.
Yeah, which, which raises an issue that I've been kicking around. And that is, since these processes have been split now, Mr. Horn will amplify or correct if need be, but, you know, the responsibility for school construction is the school boards. And I think, given that these processes are now separated, it's incumbent on us to define what's kind of school we're looking at for what capacity. So, my sense is that we should begin working on that as soon as possible because, again, given these proj, these projects have now been split, there's the school program and there's the development, we should embark on getting our piece of the work done, especially because it is the access on which everything else turns. So, I invite you to, to mull that over since we, we still have some things to get into place, but I think we should start that sooner rather than later. And then, Mr. Riedinger, you had a, something you wanted to discuss about a, a steering committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I support your notion very much that we should start on the school specific pieces ourselves as soon as possible and start to devote a significant amount of time to that. Because I don't know, I don't think it'll happen otherwise, and as you say, it's our responsibility. On the, the joint pieces, including how to divvy up the land, what the options are, all of the different pieces that were rolled into the PPEA process before, there was discussion in open session at the last joint meeting we had with the city council where the consultant made its presentation about whether there should be a, a steering committee of some sort. I actually would not call it a steering committee because I don't think it's a steering committee. But it, it, it feels to me like the, the cadence of joint meetings with the city council is simply not going to allow effective governance by the school board or the city council or guidance, if you will, in between joint sessions. I think that, that if we, if we go the process, then that means that the lion's share of that work is going to be on the two administrations, the school administration and the city administration. And I, I mean, it's my personal view that there ought to be more political involvement of elected representatives in that process. Not to make decisions on behalf of either body, but to sort of show up at meetings, to lend the, the weight, the visual weight of the school board or the, the city council to help with options development, to have a number of people to come back and to bring in additional parties like the Planning Commission, maybe the EDA, and maybe some community groups. I, I feel not completely heart over that that's the only solution, but I feel pretty strongly that that's going to be something that's important. And I understand, you know, one of the downsides that was expressed to me either on the record or after the meeting in a group smaller than three, either city council or school board members, not violative of the open meeting law, was that one problem with that sort of group is that everybody wants to be on it and nobody wants to defer to it when its decisions come back. I think those are fair points, but I think we've all got to be big men and women and say, "Not everybody can be on it." You know, maybe just a couple of people from each body and that the, the mission ought not be to make decisions, but to aid with options development and to sort of do some, to be conduits for the whole school board, both information flowing in and information flowing back along with the two administrations. So, I, I think that's a subject that's likely to be discussed by the city council. I know I have my own opinion. I think some other people do, but I don't really have a sense of what the board's view is. So, I was hopeful that we could have, if not a decision on that, obviously, we can't make the decision ourselves, but a discussion about whether that is a, a valuable step and what the pros and cons of it might be as a means to being able to execute effectively when and if a consultant is chosen and we move forward on the process.
Thoughts, questions, comments? Mr. Lawrence?
I, I agree. There, there needs to be something. My question is, how will this be different? Because two and a half years ago, we set up a steering committee. It had two from the school board, two from the city council, one from the EDA, one from the Planning Commission. They, it had no authority. We brought in development experts, we brought in school experts, we brought in commercial development experts. We found the RTKL people, they did their great study, we did the ULI TAP. We've seen this play. So, the question is, why didn't it work and why would it work this time? Because people complained about how we didn't have enough people as part of the PPEA process, how the meetings were closed, how it was very opaque. The steering committee was very, everything was, as far as I know, 95% was in the open. I'm only holding five.
It was always open.
Okay, I was holding 5%, just because I figured my memory might be faulty. It was all in the open, you know, Tom took long minutes, posted them all the time. We, we did everything.
Nobody from the public, well, two, two people from the public.
Well, two people from concerned parties who were going to bid were the ones who kept coming all the time. Who happened to be members of the public, members of the community, really happy to see them there. But we've done this. So, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
How's it going to be different?
How, how would it be different? Or is this, you know, the, the old definition of insanity, we're doing the same thing and expecting a different result? So, I understand the idea. I, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I've talked to several people who were at the joint meeting and I got to tell you, it was a bit disturbing to hear what came out because you go down a process and, and at some point, you say, "It's not working, we're going to go back to square one, we'll go back to square zero." Fine. But you go back with more clarity and more focus. And it seems like that meeting almost made it sound like we're going back to square one with less clarity and less focus than we had before. And it just worried me deeply about the possibility of where we were going because it seemed like we were in a very bad place for getting anything done. So, I, I understand your point, it's, it's just a question of how is it going to be different this time? Because you're right.
Can I ask, say something about the consultant too?
Okay, well, yeah, just.
Dr. Jones and then Mr. Riedinger.
Because on the, on the one hand, honestly, not everybody wants to be on these, but nobody wants to defer to them. So, I think you're half right there, but that's almost worse than everybody wanting to be on them because if people go and they actually get informed, then it's great, then, you know, it's easier on the backend. So, I'm just trying to figure out, how would this be different? Because we have done exactly what you're talking about because we all thought that was exactly what we should do and we're here. So, that's my rant.
Dr. Jones has a quick comment and then Mr. Riedinger.
Yeah, the only thing I, I would say is that we are, this, the consultant has been selected, it is Links that came to our meeting. And what might be a really good idea, they did mention having a committee. So, that's why we're putting the consultant in place is so they can guide us through the process and maybe we let them get started and then allow them to actually inform us on what they think we need to do because this is what they do for a living. So, they may very well say, "Oh, you don't need a committee because here are your questions. These are school board." Because one thing we've been really clear about, we don't really want city council making the decisions for the school board or school board making city council decisions like about zoning and stuff. So, the issues may be so separated that the school board's going to be answering the questions that you have and the general government, city council will be answering theirs and all those big things where we come together. We just don't know how many of them there will be. So, letting them get started would probably, to see where, where, where we end up, would be really helpful for us.
Mr. Riedinger?
For the record, I don't want to be on it. Only because I don't know anything about building schools. But I think what has happened in the past is been too many politicians and too many people who don't know what they're talking about in the process. I'm going to be very blunt. Leave, I like the word options development. Send the folks in who know what they're talking about, let them come out with some real hard numbers. We know we don't have $112 million, so cut it out and say, "Go in, set them a figure, give them 75 million." I don't know what that number is, but let's be very specific. And we're not doing a path forward, John, to your point. You raise a very good question. We're not, we're not going in looking for a process. We want results this time. So, send the folks who know what they're talking about and let them come up with something that is practical, that can be workable. But the fewer politicians are in that room, the better. That's what's going to be different, at least that's my two cents.
Right, but the problem is, it's still the people who are the politicians who are going to have to vote to do it.
After the options are developed. But don't get them in larding the damn thing with pork, asking for everything, which is why the PPEA process failed to begin with. We wanted everything, everything on the planet in that. And that's why we've got two, two developers who didn't want to do it anyway.
Well, but that gets to the point of, that gets to the point of what are we as a body going to say we want? Is it going to be different than the size school that we had last time?
We do what we can afford because clearly, that's where the rubber meets the road.
Right, but we still don't even know that. I mean, that's part of my going back with less clarity.
It's definitely less than $112 million, I can tell you that.
Well, well, but, but, but I think what you've touched on is, is, you know, the, the issue isn't, the issue that is holding us up is not what was, what will the high school look like? That's not what is holding us up. I don't think the issue is even, it, it's, it's hard, but what would development look like? I think the ultimate issue that's hanging everybody up is how do we pay for this? And so, I don't know if there should be a finance oriented steering committee that can really develop for people's understanding that. But, you know, people buy things all the time that they don't have the cash for. It's called financing. That's what finance is. It's, it's finding ways to afford things you don't have the money for. And if done properly, it's responsible and sound. But it's also alchemy sometimes and people don't understand it. And so, it seems to me if, and I'm, and I'm, we need to do it, I don't know how we need to do it or whether the steering committee is the right way to do it, but we need to get the alchemy of finance explained so that people can say, you know, "Just because we can borrow XD million doesn't mean that we can't find other ways to make things possible." So, at the same time, that's not, you know, always easy or clear. So, it, it seems to me that's the central, that's the long pole in the tent right now.
I don't know that the alchemy, and I know just enough to be dangerous. I've dabbled in the numbers a few times. But, but I'm thinking, we, we, we focus on what is affordable or what this, what, if we're going with 2% on our budget, maybe we should ask the city, general government, "What can you give us? Can you give us 40 million? Can you give us 50 million? Can you give us 60 million?" And then we go to the committee and say, "What can you design or build for us for this money? Because that's all we have." You know, otherwise, we're spinning our wheels and running around in circles and we'll get nowhere, trying to figure out, you know, should we get, this is what we want. Let's go with what we have, what we can afford. I like a Bentley, but I can't afford it, so I drive my Honda. You know, that's how we should think.
But if you have a family of eight people and somebody says, "We can only afford a Civic," you have a problem. So, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, no, I mean, that's exactly it. I mean, this whole thing is founded on the cost, not on what the school's going to look like. It's founded on the cost and we don't have that. So, to me, the idea of going toward a steering committee to talk about how do we build something and we still haven't been told how much we can spend seems a bit pointless. So, I, I, I think the finance is key. I mean, fine, it's not 112 million. Well, guess what? It's not 40 million either because that would be pointless. But it's got to be a, a smaller range than we have now, which really lets us plan for nothing and lets the community not look at anything concrete. And we're never going to get any buy-in from anybody for somewhere between 40 and 112. So, yeah, to me, the, if it really comes down to city council saying, "We can only afford X, we need to know what the X is," and we've not come close to getting that.
Mr. Riedinger?
Just a couple of quick things. First off, I mean, obviously, and a number of people, they haven't circled around it, they've said it directly, the affordability question is going to be the ultimate one. And I agree with the chair very much that the, you know, we have to have something we can afford and if we don't answer that question, then it's going to be hard to make all the progress. That said, I, I don't think, not having been on this body or involved with the steering committee last time, it, it doesn't seem to me like the steering committee was the reason that people, the process failed. It feels to me like there were some decisions associated with how the whole thing, you know, what the package was going to be and some foreseeable perhaps, but certainly some unforeseeable results of that process and trying to get two things done at once. In fact, everything I've heard from people about the steering committee process is that it worked pretty well last time. Although, at the end of the day, the, the most important metric, whether we built a school or not, was not successfully met. It seems to me, to respond to a little bit to, to Michael's question, I, I understand the desire to, to say this is a technical question and we need answers to the information. I think that's very much true. But it's also true that this is a mixed political and technical question. The, the technical people can't, they can develop options for us to consider, but, you know, they can't tell us if it's better to, you know, broaden this and do something more with Fairfax County or bring in additional private partners and add more money. They can develop that as options, you know, with the backing of the school board and the city council, they can have those conversations. But at the end of the day, you know, whether something's affordable or not is a decision made by the politicians and not by the deck consultants. So, I, I do think it's important to have, it, it remains my view that it would be very valuable to have a group of people broader than just the school board and the city council, but including some of the school board and the city council, to be more actively involved on a day-to-day basis in working with the consultants, while the consultants work to their own. And I don't dispute what Dr. Jones said about, you know, was hearing what the consultant has to say about that. I simply wanted to have the discussion about what we as a board thought the approach ought to be. And that said, I've expressed my view, I think others have expressed their view. My view might change based on what the consultant said, but I don't know that it would.
Well, and I think, as I, as I puzzle this through, I mean, one of the things I think that we need to try to find a way to do is to allow the consultant and staff and associated experts to work as quickly and as clearly and as focused, focusedly, if that's a word, as possible. And so, maybe you have, you know, a, a couple of liaisons to those, to the staff things where basically there's a conduit of information about how the staff work is going and adjustments to the staff work can be provided by the bodies if and as necessary. But, you know, to some extent, getting the, the politicians out of the way might dovetail with that in the sense that if, if, if we enable and empower the, the experts and staff and have a conduit of information from representatives of the bodies, that might be another way to go. I, I don't know. It's, it's, it's hard to say. But, but, you know, that was the thing about the steering committee was that it was largely[1763.91] But, you know, that was the thing about the steering committee, was that it was largely not staff-oriented. It was us talking to each other, and then engaging experts from time to time. But it was a, it was a concept validation, rather than a prototyping or, you know, action-oriented thing. So, other thoughts?
For me, ultimately, I kind of agree with Michael. I think it's going to be bottom line of what the cost is going to be. And I get, putting together some type of group is, I think, bringing in some of the folks from that we've mentioned, and potentially, public, just to kind of get a better sense of. Because when we were doing the, all the other work, $40 million kept getting thrown around as what the city can afford to give. And we all in this room know, that's not going to get us anywhere. And really, I don't know, it's, I'm interested to see what some of the schools within this region have paid for schools. We're not going to go Cadillac of DC spending the 125-plus million to do it, but some of our neighbors who have done renovations and done brand-new. I mean, are they all in that price point, and just trying to figure out, and just figuring out what we can, what we can get, and just, and truly what we can get, and see what a number is? Because I agree, I think we've, I think a lot of pushback has come back at the $112 million. But I don't know if we can get anything much less than that for what we all know that we need.
Well, and getting a better understanding as to what the numbers mean. Because you'll have some high school will say, oh, we actually built our high school for 70 million. That was the cost of only building the high school. It wasn't any of the development work, it wasn't, you know, the FF and the, I mean, it wasn't a whole bunch of other things, and our price always included everything. So, we also need to be better at that, because I think we shot ourselves in the foot several times by having people who could say, look, this high school got built for 70 million, they thought it would be 90, you're out of your minds. Like, well, no, it didn't cost that much overall to build, it cost a lot more.
Other comments and questions? Some's going on, because everybody's on their devices.
There is a, an announcement was made by a, I'll let Dr. Jones. I'm not going to say anything. I don't know, my phone just started going up, because someone, someone must have had an alert set up for Dr. Jones's name.
Well, be that as it may.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on the matter at hand? And let us go adjourned.
Adjourned?
Yes.